Sure whether there's going to be an intensity there that would really change the results of this. But his recommendation, his review comment was to revise the study to incorporate whatever traffic might be generated by that. And that certainly can be done. I don't believe that'll have any impact with regard to the results. That I'll explain to you as we go through the rest of the study. The third element was to try to get more updated data with regard to what is going to be generated trip-wise on the site with the proposed use. And to do that, we went out and surveyed two different sites. One that's actually in Hartford Road, another one that's over in Morrisville, to get trip generation data for a similar type trailer repair storage facility. And we did those counts, as we would do normally counts at the driveways, to get what the incidents are. We broke that down by employee or staff vehicles versus tractor trailers. And we consolidated that data to try and come up with trip generation that we could then use for this site. And what we found was the Morrisville site had more conservatively high trip generation. So we used that data so that we were as conservatively high as we could be to do our analysis for this site. I'll also say that the morning peak hour at the Morrisville site was between seven and eight in the morning, consistent with the Bridgeboro Road peak hour. The afternoon peak hour out there was 3:15 to 4:15, a little bit earlier than we would anticipate. But instead of trying to do anything with those numbers, we again want conservatively high and used those trip generation numbers for the four to five peak hour at Bridgeboro Road. So again, I think we're very safe with regard to the numbers that we're using for trip generation based on usually actual data from actual similar sites. And what we found and project is that there'll be 26 trips during the peak hour in the morning generated by 10 employees and a total of 16 trailer trips. That would be 11 trips in, five trips out. During the afternoon peak hour, four to five in the afternoon, a total of 42 trips. Again, 10 of those will be employees. And then 32 trailer trips, 16 in, 16 out. That is what is projected to be generated based on the actual comparable sites. Just to give an order of magnitude, the New Jersey Department of Transportation has standards that they use for significant increase. And significant increase would be over 100 peak hour trips. Obviously, we're not in cap for that with regard to what is projected on this site and consistent with what we found from the other facilities that we did the studies for. We then had to apply that traffic to the intersections that we evaluated, the site access, Natalie Road intersection with Bridgeboro and Creek, Bridgeboro, Hartford-Bridgeboro, to analyze what impact we might have. And with regard to the impact, there was no changes in the levels of service when we evaluated between no build and the build. And so this level of traffic is not generating any changes to the levels of service which relates to delay at the intersections. Obviously, there's going to be some increase in delay, but it's not significant enough that's changing any of the levels of service out there. All the levels of service at the intersections are at a level of service C or better at Creek and Bridgeboro, D or better at Hartford and Bridgeboro. At the site accesses, we're seeing a better. And as has been discussed, the site access has been consolidated to one site access point along Bridgeboro Road, which actually is an improvement over the condition today with multiple sites. And the level of service at that site access is acceptable. There's a center left turn lane out there. We've had discussions with county. The county is saying we basically agree with the concept of having one driveway. And there might be some minor widening that's being done on our sides of Bridgeboro Road just to make a consistent shoulder along Bridgeboro Road, along the frontage of the site. And that would be the only improvements that would be required from the county. So with all of that said, this site will not have a significant impact on the overall roadway network. Again, the significant impact would be if we're having more than 100 trips, we would look at whether or not we're changing any level of service. We don't have more than 100 trips during the peak hour. We're not changing any levels of service out there. The site accesses will work to acceptable levels of service from a county perspective, who have jurisdiction of the roadway. And the impact to the intersections up and down stream is not significant. And that is demonstrated through no changes in the level of service and levels of service today and in the future that would be consistent with what the county would expect without having to do any mitigation. So that's a synopsis of the update that we provided.
Could you maybe, in your experience, is that something you took a look at? But you know, this is a use variance and the property is zoned for residential use. In your experience, would the traffic generated by this site be less or more than if the site is entirely developed for residential use?
Well, I can anticipate that you could have a level of residential development that would far exceed 42 peak hour trips during the PM, far exceed 26 trips during the morning peak hour. I think the question that always arises is, okay, well, you do have trucks mixed in that. When we do our evaluations and capacity analyses, you know, trucks are accounted for in terms of taking a little bit longer in terms of their movement out of a driveway, their movement through an intersection. And we put those percentages in. So based on how large the site is, I'm convinced that you could have more intensity with the residential use based on the size of the site.
And off the top of your head, are there any other uses? I'm not asking you to, you know, say exactly what would be appropriate at the site, but other uses that are generally out there? How would they compare?
It's interesting, Mr. Rancamp, that I were just discussing the small section of this that is neighborly commercial. You could put a small commercial entity that actually could generate more than 42 peak hour trips just in and of itself without developing the rest of the lot. So yes, you know, the intensity of this is certainly keeping, in my mind, from a traffic perspective and from a transportation planning perspective, there's not going to be any impairments to the zoning plan or the master plan. There's not going to be any issue with regards to the impact of the public good on a traffic side of it because it will fit within what was planned in the summer.
So the off-site impacts are not anything greater than what would be anticipated from the development of the site with permitted use?
That's correct.
There were some questions last time about, you know, left versus right turns out the driveway. Did you take a look at that any further?
Yeah, we again portions the driveway, left turn movements, right turn movements fairly evenly in terms of the outbound side of things. And everything worked well within the levels of service expected by the county. And so there was no issue with regard to delay on-site. There was no issue with regard to delay along Bridgeboro Road for left turn movement in. So there was no issues.
And you mentioned the county. Have you had any discussions with the county?
Yeah, there's been a discussion with them with regard to how this access would look. And again, their response was there may be the need for some widening, minor widening along the frontage to have a consistent shoulder area out there instead of something that varies along the frontage.
Very good. So as a summary to your testimony, you think that the traffic, truck traffic in particular, that will be generated by the use of this site will not have any substantial negative impact on Bridgeboro Road or any of the surrounding areas, including the residential areas?
Yeah, that's correct. Again, county roads are by designation truck rails. So trucks are anticipated on these roadways. The numbers of trucks that are being generated by this are not a significant amount that would create any issue with regard to level of service and operations. So yes, this will not have a significant effect.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Does anyone on the board have follow-up questions? Ed, looks like you were ready to jump in?
Yeah, I know this has been brought up previously in other applications. Can you speak to the approach delay associated with the existing conditions versus the built conditions and even the no build conditions? I can see within the report, there is an increase. But can you speak to that?
If you give me a second, I'll scroll to the actual numbers. With regard to the existing driveway, and I'll give you some actual numbers from the counts. The existing driveway has one to two trips during the peak hour coming out. That's where the delays at the stop control. The projected increase there would be up to that during the critical peak hour, 42 trips, which not all of them would be outbound trips. So the total outbound would be 26 total trips on the outbound side. So it's an increase from two trips to 26 trips. With regard to the delay, and that's going to take me just a little bit longer to give you the actual numbers, but just bear with me. So the existing delay would be the level service A with nine seconds of delay for those two vehicles. So nominal delay.
Maybe I'll elaborate a little bit more. So the focus of the discussion at the last meeting with Nathan revolved around the impacts to the intersections of Bridgeboro and Hartford and also Bridgeboro and Creek. So if you speak to that and both the existing AM, PM peak hours, no build AM, PM peak hours, and the proposed AM, PM peak hours. And explain to, I guess to us, the, you know, I understand that we're within the same level of service. However, from a perspective, there is an added delay. What is that delay looking like?
Okay. Unfortunately, the way that we do our reports, I have to scroll through quite a bit. So just bear with me and I will scroll through and give you the answers. And we typically don't look at existing to builds. We look at the no build to the build. If you want me to give all three, I can do that.
I think from, for the purposes of, you know, the situation currently, what the no build is based off of the year, projected year, and then the build condition.
Very good. So just bear with me again. And I will give AM and PM, no build to build. So let's start with Hartford Road and Bridgeboro Road, the signalized intersection during the no build AM peak hour. It's at a level service C with 34.6 seconds of delay, on average delay. When we get to the build, the AM peak hour is at a level service C. It goes up by .1 seconds of average delay to 34.7 seconds of average delay. As I said, it's a very insignificant effect. During the PM peak hour, again, bear with me. The intersection of Hartford and Bridgeboro is at a level service, overall level service D, 39 seconds of delay. So the barrier between the C and the D is 35 seconds. So that's why it's a C in the morning, goes to a D in the afternoon. The build at that location, during the PM peak hour, is 39.5 seconds of delay, level service D. That's a .5 second delay increase on average. Again, it won't even notice it. Going to the other signalized intersection of Creek and Bridgeboro, the AM peak hour during the no build condition is the AM peak hour during the no build condition is 22.8 seconds of average delay, level service C. And the build condition during the AM at Creek and Bridgeborough Road is at 23.1 seconds of level service C, less than a half a second of average delay increase during the morning. PM peak hour at Bridgeborough and Creek is 33.7 seconds of average delay, level service C. And during the build condition, that goes to 34.6 seconds of average delay, again, the level service C. So that's again about a .8 second, less than a second of increased delay. Do you want me to do the site accesses also? Those are the two major ones, the two signalized intersections?
Yeah, if you do the site access as well.
I'd have to do it by movement on the site accesses. So again, bear with me. I think I mentioned during the AM peak hour at the site driveway, no build. Feels like suspense going on, my apologies. 12 point, 12.6 average delay for the left turn movement out. That's a level service P. If we go to the build, that driveway, that build would be 14.5 seconds of average delay, level service B. So an increase of about two seconds of delay. During the PM peak hour, the level service is a C at 15.3 seconds for the exiting movement out of the site. The build PM at that driveway is 19.1 seconds of average delay, again, a level service C. So that's about a four second, well, less than four second increase in average delay. So you can see, you know, the delay increases are fairly insignificant, fairly insignificant. They are insignificant. Don't change the level of service out there with regard to what's happening because there's not enough traffic to generate changes.
I don't know if it's going to impact anything that, any of your answers, but the no build situation here is going back to the situation that exists with an approved truck terminal on, albeit one of the lots, not all three lots. So there will be, you know, positively some increases from the measurements that you took right now anyway.
Yeah, I mean, considering the fact that during that, during those peak hours that we did the actual driveway count, only having one to two driveway trips today, I'm assuming that use could actually permit it, use on that site could be more.
Yeah, and the use of the site before this application was submitted was probably substantially more because it was being actively used on it as a truck terminal across basically the entire property, even though it was not necessarily approved for at least.
Correct. Say, the whole site was being used, but the approval was not for something that large.
The approval was only on Lot 50.
Okay. But kind of comparing apples and oranges, that's the only time I mentioned.
And obviously, the numbers that I just gave you, it demonstrates that it just is not a substantial increase in delay. In effect, you're not going to notice the delay increases.
Get back at him, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Couple of quick questions. You had indicated that you felt that this was, in effect, would have less impact than residential development on this site. Is that based on any type of, you know, design done to see how many residential units you could get on the site? Or is that just basically a quick assumption? How's that come about?
No, that was just a quick, when I saw the size of the land, it's just the landmass, just a quick assumption.
And the, would the peak hours be the same for residential as opposed to this truck traffic?
That's a great question, Jay.
I don't get that off.
You know, we saw on the Morrisville that the peak hour, actually that PM was earlier. So it's possible that, you know, many truck operations, those truckers are trying to get in and out of there before the peak hours hit. So residential doesn't have that same type of situation. So you could have a little bit more intensity with regard to the actual peak hour for residential versus this. However, we didn't analyze it in that fashion. Kind of did a real conservative work at it.
And then the other comment, you referred to the, felt that the neighborhood commercial zone by itself could generate more traffic impact than what was proposed with this trailer facility, the terminal. But the neighborhood commercial portions, 80% wetlands?
Yeah. And I was just looking at the zone as opposed to exactly what you could develop there.
All right, so I just wanted to understand that. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Schropshire, I have a couple of follow-up questions. You said that you compared the site that's being proposed here with another site in Delray and the Morrisville location.
Correct.
The other site in Delray is the one that's right off of Hartford Road, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the Morrisville one, with regard to that location, that's not immediately adjacent to a residential neighborhood, isn't that true?
Yeah, I didn't go there myself, so I just know what the numbers say as opposed to the area that it was in.
So if I were to say to you that that particular site and a residential neighborhood that is somewhat nearby is separated by train tracks and another highway, you wouldn't have any, any knowledge of that?
But again, I didn't look at it.
All right, so that type of thing didn't enter into your analysis, is that right?
Correct.
All right. Now, we talked about trips, you know, in the report. Do you know currently how many trips are happening per hour from this particular location during the AM and then PM? Do you have a concept on that?
Yeah, again, the council we did at the driveways just showed one to two trips today.
From the driveway section, right?
Right.
And, okay, all right. Now, the last hearing we had, there was some testimony about these trailers being dropped off, not idling, and being left there for storage or repair to some degree. So clearly, someone has to drop them off and then leave the location. So either by Uber or somebody following them to pick them up or calling for a car. It doesn't sound to me that those trips of the driver of the trailer dropping it off is calculated in your numbers. In other words, you've mentioned employees of the site and you've mentioned trips of the tractor trailers. Did you take into consideration other trips to get those drivers off of the site and then back to the site?
Yes.
Okay, where is that reflected in your report?
When we did the driveway counts at Hartford and we did the driveway counts in Morrisville, that was everybody in and out. So it included those trips that would be carrying either the dropped off truck leaving trailer, leaving the trailer and the truck exiting, or if the truck stays on site, however, that driver gets off site.
Those counts are all vehicles?
All vehicles.
No dichotomy between cars, automobiles, and trucks?
Correct.
You've also discussed the delays. We just haven't heard your testimony about the delays that might occur at the different intersections and of course at the driveway. And you mentioned that with the tractor trailers and the other vehicles, the delay would be, I think you said not significant, is that fair?
That's correct.
Does your analysis or the report that was made here, or either report, does it take into consideration any type of safety issue that is created by tractor trailer traffic as compared to regular motor vehicle traffic?
Capacity analyses don't particularly have a safety component to them. What it does is it does calculate how a truck will operate differently than a car will operate because it's longer, takes more to get up to speed. But the assumption is that the roadways and intersections are designed in accordance with generally accepted traffic engineering principles, and therefore they are safe by their, by their, by their design. And so, yeah, as I said, it's not something that's inherent in our capacity analyses. But if we saw something that was not designed in accordance with a generally accepted standard or unsafe from our view, we would obviously bring that up, and I'm sure the county would also.
Well, for example, if you are making a right out of this facility with a tractor trailer and you go towards Hartford Road on the Bridgeborough, you're going to make a right on Hartford Down. Let's say that is the direction that the driver chooses. It's kind of a tight intersection. We know there's a lot of traffic there already. So when you make that right-hand turn, the tractor trailer has to have a wide berth, go left to make that right as compared to making a left turn where they have a little bit more leeway. So did your analysis take into consideration that particular situation because of the other lane that's going to be either making a left or going straight or making a right?
It did in terms of the overall design of the intersection, which I actually sat out there this evening. And the shoulder area, there's a substantial shoulder area for that right turn. So if the truck is in the traveling, which is where it should be, there is a lot of radius to make that turn, even though the angle of the intersection would say, hey, maybe there's an issue here. But there's, there's enough shoulder area there that these two county roads can function with truck traffic.
You're talking about right at the intersection where that 711 is, is that what you're speaking?
Correct.
Right, so you're saying that in your opinion, there's enough to get through there with multiple tractor trailers that won't create a significant delay?
And I'm saying the county says that also, so it's just not me.
The county's not here to testify.
No, I understand. If they're designed, I'm just saying that they're designed.
And that design, because it's two county roads, necessarily takes into account the fact that there will be tractor trailers there.
That's correct.
So even if there were not going to be tractor trailers there, because it's two county roads, it needs to be designed to be safe for tractor trailers, even if they're not going to be present.
That's typically how the county designs roadways.
Out of the trips that you've analyzed and looking at what you anticipate would happen with this particular variance if approved, how many tractor trailers per hour? Not as many, I know you discussed, but how many again was that?
Bear with me a second. So during the morning peak hour, 16 total trips, trailer trips. During the afternoon peak hour, 32 trailer trips.
So 16 in the morning total, right? And that's going in and out of the facility, right?
11 in, 5 out.
Okay, and so that would also include whichever direction the tractor trailer decides to then, you know, use, either coming from Creek Road or Hartford. That's everything, right?
Correct.
Same thing with the 32 in the evening?
16 in, 16 out, correct.
Okay. So with 32 trucks in the evening, how is it possible? I mean, this is just the layperson's analysis, that there wouldn't be a significant delay in an intersection that is already completely packed and delayed endlessly for several reasons. We have the Bridgeborough Hartford intersection. We have Otz Davenport, the 711 right there. And then shortly down the road on Hartford, you have the intersection of Conroe Road and Hartford Road, which is very, a very difficult intersection for people to turn. How is it possible with 32 trucks, let's say they all decided to go right to go off the Route 130, could happen. What then?
Yeah, obviously, we anticipate that there'll be a dispersion of those trucks at the site driveway, so it's not going to all be focused at one location. So that's.
Well, let's say half of them decide to go that way. 15 trucks in that time period making a right-hand turn to then make a right on Hartford Road. How is that not going to be a significant delay in traffic?
Well, we didn't look at that as the worst case scenario because.
I'm posing it to you now.
Yeah, we didn't look at it.
Okay.
So real quick to build off that question, I know this is brought up the last meeting from my recollection of the vehicle queue at the intersection, how that would be impacted by the additional tractor trailers at the intersection? Can you speak to?
Yeah, with that insignificant level of increased delay, it's not going to be any noticeable increase in the queuing.
And that's, that was within your analysis in terms of the storage lane availability?
Correct.
And you look at it as, so 15 per hour, that's one truck for every four minutes?
Correct.
So, you know, like the chairman said, you did not, your models do not assume that all 15 are going to be leaving within five minutes. They assume it's going to be one truck every four minutes. So there could be times when, you know, you have three trucks leave within four minutes and then there might be an increase. But then there will be, you know, a 15-minute period when no one will leave.
Yeah, and just to be as accurate as I can with regard to the analyses, we put peak hour factors, we are required to put peak hour factors into the analysis. So we look at the worst 15 minutes within the hour, and that's what we're analyzing. So in other words, it's, it's more intense than one truck trip every 15 minutes or every four minutes. It's more intense because we don't get the worst 15 minutes. And that's what's required.
Just sort of just jumping on the same theme here. So the tractor trailer traffic that you analyzed, the length of the tractor trailers, what was assumed in terms of their length?
Yeah, it would be a standard trailer that's got the 53-foot trailer with a truck in front of it. So it's a, it's a standard long trailer.
53, not any longer?
No. Well, the actual trailer is 53, the cab in front of it makes it longer.
Okay. And the weight of the vehicle is, would you say it's significantly larger or greater than a passenger vehicle such as a Honda Chevy Bolt, something like that?
If it's empty, you know, whether it's empty or full, that would make a difference, but yeah, it could be.
Okay.
And that goes back to the county road, that needs to be designed for that weight because they know that trucks will be driving on that route?
Correct.
So, and given the fully loaded 53-foot trailer versus a Honda Civic, would you say that in your experience that the acceleration rate for those two vehicles is drastically different?
Yes, and that's accounted for in the analysis.
So, and you did explain your analysis, can you, without trying to get too much into the math, because I don't know that we are.
I want to build up your question real quick. So I have in my notes from the prior meeting that WB67s won't be, won't be utilized on site. So I'm just looking up the dimensions right now.
Ed, you said WB67s. Could you just, for everybody present that's not an engineer, tell us what that is?
Based off the diagram I'm looking at right now, please correct me if I'm wrong on this, that would incorporate a 53-foot trailer?
A WB67, which is wheelbase 67, would be a 53-foot trailer.
Yeah, so the, let's see. Yeah, so the, the actual lot, based off of the notes that I have from the last meeting, is that, that size trailer won't be utilized within the parking stalls. Can you clarify onsite if these will be used or won't be used? Because I have in my notes that they would not be. Give clarification, thank you.
I believe the testimony was that there was.
Specific spaces?
Specific spaces would not be utilized by them. But there was not testimony that, that the 67-inch wheelbase trailers would not access the site.
Thank you, and then what?
There was testimony that, you know, again, there is no tenant here. So it's possible that a tenant will not have any of them and that they will be smaller trucks. But we do not know that today and the applicant did not limit it to saying that WB67s would not be.
Understood, and I believe this might have been touched upon as well. So obviously, there's, based off the trip generations that are, that are being spoken about, and there's 291 spaces that are available. Is this going to operate more as repair or a storage versus repair facility?
Yeah, there'll be testimony on that from our planner later on. But I think the answer to that is generally yes, although it will not be like permanent storage or anything like that. But like I said, our planner will provide testimony.
So, and you did give us numbers before about your calculations of the delay. The last time we were here, is my understanding that there was testimony that there's no ITE standard for this type of facility, correct?
Correct, that's why we want to have a counter.
Great, okay. Great, okay, and then the length of the trailer, so you don't know, it's being built on spec, so we don't know the population of trucks that are going to enter the facility, correct?
Correct.
And the calculation of the delay, I mean, I didn't see anything in there, and I'm not, again, I'm not the engineer, but I didn't see anything in there that states how you calculate based on the level of service and the delay based upon, you know, obviously, there's a number of vehicles, but whether it's an average or what assumption is being made as to how many of the vehicles within the queue at any given time are passenger vehicles, like the little Chevy Volt or whatever, or as opposed to a 67-foot tractor-trailer? And what's the assumption there? Is that built in?
So in the capacity analyses, we're required to put a percent truck. And so we look at what that percent truck is gonna be based on the counts that we've taken and based on the increase related to. So it's all based on the percentage of the, so in other words, the program calculates it out based on the percentage that we get.
What was the percentage of trucks assumed, do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, but it would have been inputted based on not only the counts, but what we were checking.
So this is a calculation performed by a program or a formula?
We actually do the calculation of the truck percent and enter it into the program.
Can you just clarify how you get to that percentage again?
By the counts that we do of the roadway, and by the increase, or in some cases, it would be a decrease if it's a left truck related, the change that would result from the proposed use.
So it's a combination of existing actual conditions combined with anticipated conditions based on the use of the site?
That's correct.
And the data that you received from the other similar sites in the area?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's not atypical for us to conservatively high round up in terms of those percentages, so...
Is there anything, as traffic engineers, that I, as a land use attorney, I hear them speak very often, is there anything within your profession that, you know, requires you to use the most conservative approach? Because I very often hear conservative, and you do use the, you know, peak hour, which is...
That's conservative.
Conservative.
Conservatively high, yeah, but sometimes when we say conservative, people take the wrong, conservatively high. There's nothing that dictates to us other than the use, the common use of a peak hour factor in review agencies. So the peak hour factor is incumbent in terms of how we do analysis. In terms of the trip generation, Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual is, they come up with average data, typically just use the average. So, again, we're even being a little bit more conservative than what the Institute of Transportation would be because we're using conservatively high data from two data points. If we averaged them out, it would have been less than we projected. And if we actually looked at what would happen during the street peak hour instead of the usual peak hour, it would be even less. So again, we're conservatively high in terms of what we did in the analysis.
So jumping back to this acceleration issue of, you know, a Trans Am is able to accelerate at a greater rate than a fully-loaded tractor-trailer. And we experience delay when we're sitting behind the slow-moving tractor-trailer. And if I understood your testimony, you said that you built in a certain percentage of trucks being in the queue, and they're acceler... How many trucks did you, I mean, how did you account for the acceleration rate of the trucks and its impact on the wait time?
That's something the program does for us, it calculates out what the actual movement rate would be of a truck versus a car through the system, so that's a program thing.
But you don't know what the percentage of trucks are in that queue either?
Yeah, off the top of my head, no.
Off the top of your head, you don't know?
You said earlier regarding the chairman's question about trucks going to Hartford, and you said the distribution of trucks turning right or left out of driveway, what is the distribution utilized? What percent are going to Hartford, what percent are going to Creek?
I think we use pretty much a 50/50 out of the site.
And what was that based on? Was that assumed, or is that what's happening now?
Yeah, I mean, what's happening now is a very low volume, I think it was two trips, and they were all making a lefts, if I remember correctly. So we split them up, we had more going out. Yeah, what we're showing is a 50/50 split in terms of the outbound. In terms of the inbound, we have a little bit heavier volume coming from Creek Road in the north. So, but on the outbound side, we split it up 50/50.
Well, and that is one of the things that you took, one of the updates you had to make, because I guess probably based on the existing, there were two going to the left. You had the overwhelming majority making a left, and I know that was brought up by the board engineer as something that you needed to take another look at prior to this meeting, because it could not be assumed that almost every truck was gonna make a left.
Correct.
Towards Creek.
I actually have another quick question, going back to the original, the start of your conversation with the information that was included. I don't know if it's, I don't see it listed here. There was an approved site plan that was directly adjacent to this site for a collect warehouse facility. Or are those future track generations incorporated into your analyses?
I don't know. Looking at what we included, and it was the Kings at Delran Residential Development, and then Tupper Ridge, so those are the two that we included.
Does it, it's right beside the site?
It's right beside the, yeah, and to your point before, it's a contractor use, my recollection.
And that'll be directly between your site and Hartford, and therefore, again, will be the impact on Hartford?
If something else needs to be, since we're gonna have to take a look at the park, the passive park, we can take a look at that also.
Mr. Shropshire, I wanted to follow, you had testified a few moments ago that in analyzing the safety issue that I had asked, that these are county roads that approve tractor-trailer, would you agree with me that this intersection has been, or if you know, has been in its current condition for quite a period of time? It's been Hartford, Bridgeboro, looking at that intersection, I should be more specific. It's been that way with the surrounding area for quite a period of time, would you agree with that?
Yes.
All right, and regarding that particular location, it's a very different type of intersection from, say, one on Route 130, is that correct?
I would say yes, because, yeah.
Route 130 is a major artery, right? This intersection that we're talking about is a small-town kind of intersection, is it not?
No, and not in that.
Not in your, okay, so that's fine. But you had mentioned that because the county would have to approve for tractor-trailer, is it not true, though, that across the country, many, many, many accidents occur with tractor-trailers, even though they're on approved roads, approved by whatever county?
I don't know.
You don't know? And again, I'm asking because this intersection here is an intersection between multiple parts of Delran communities, it's near a high school, and there are many kids that walk through that intersection to get to the high school. So how is it possible that there wouldn't be a heightened safety risk, if you know, with additional tractor-trailers upwards of fifteen or thirty-two in those peak hours? Especially given that tractor-trailers have less visibility or create visibility problems with compared to passenger vehicles?
So what I can tell you from our profession, with regard to safety, it is an incredibly high percentage of accidents that are driver-related. It's not related to the design of the roadway or malfunctioning of the vehicle. So the type of vehicle rarely has an issue with regard to the number of accidents. The type of driver rarely has an impact, I'm sorry, the type of vehicle and the type of roadway design rarely has it. With regard to the driver, the driver is without a doubt, that's the most unsafe component of the equation. When you have professionals driving, typically you have safer drivers. So usually, that's what you have with CDL licensed drivers, safer drivers. As long as this is designed appropriately, I don't think there's any issue with regard to safety.
Just let me ask you that, as long as what is designed appropriately?
The roadway.
Is the roadway already not designed, it's already in a particular configuration between Hartford and Bridgeboro, correct?
Yeah.
So you're proposing that it be changed?
No, the county only asked for a slight widening on our side to unify the shoulder width.
When you say your side meeting on the side of Bridgeboro that this business would be located?
Along the front, yes.
How much would that shoulder be widened, do you know?
Don't know off the top of my head, no.
And you're talking about widening it from, say, the corner of Hartford and Bridgeboro all the way to your facility, or?
The site frontage.
Say it again.
Along the site frontage.
Right, which would then stop 100 yards before the intersection.
Yeah, and it may already be uniform beyond that point, so...
Okay.
I have a question on Figure six, seven, and eight, where you're comparing the existing levels of service, no build, and then build levels. You have the A, B, Cs, and Bs, can you remind us again what those levels all mean? Because there are, if you look at some of the individual intersections, there are changes that happen, but overall, it's kind of like, oh, we've done it, there is gonna be changes. Can there be some...
Yeah, there's movements within the intersection that do change, the overall intersection level of service don't change. And there's a table on page six that actually says what each one of the late components are, A through F, for an unsignalized location and for a signalized location. So I'm not sure whether that helps answer the question that you just had, or whether, the real question is, there are some movements that change, and what are those changes, if you want me to go through them?
So what's an A, B, C, and a D and E? Is E the worst?
Yeah, no, actually, F is the worst. F would be failure, and based on Table four, at an unsignalized intersection, that would be in excess of 50 seconds of average delay. At a signalized intersection, that would be in excess of 80 seconds of average delay.
Okay, so if we're looking at Natalie Road in Figure six, it has it going straight across.
What page do you want me to go?
So it's Figure six, there's no page.
Yep, I see it, thank you.
But then on the build levels, Natalie Road, there isn't a continuation onto it. So is that where, the map isn't consistent?
Well, what happens is there's an existing access opposite Natalie today that will be removed, and the site access will be relocated between Natalie and Hartford, so that's why those figures are different.
Okay, so Natalie Road now, a no build is a D to F, and then we'll go to a C to C if it's built?
Correct, and that's because they're not competing with the traffic that's across the street, even though it's low.
And it's a, if you're on Bridgeboro and you're gonna take a left into your facility, are people, can people pass the truck being stopped to go in? Are they going around the shoulder?
Yes, no, there's an existing center left turn lane that gets the left turn traffic off of the through movement traffic, so nobody, no through movements are delayed.
What's the length of that, what's the length of that left turn?
It's a center left turn lane that extends.
Yeah, how long is that?
I think it almost goes between Creek and Hartford, not all the way to Creek. It goes, I think, to where the bridge is, but it's well beyond our site front.
How many tractor-trailers could probably be in that left lane turning in, do we know?
We're gonna get the length, the appropriate length for you.
Lou, satellite imagery suggests it's .2 miles, so...
Alphabets.
Entire length, so correct.
Yeah, from where Jay's landscaping begins on Bridgeboro to Castleton Road.
Your question was though, from coming from Hartford, so probably approximately two tractor-trailers on that entrance.
So you could get more than two tractor-trailers pointing in at one time?
There would be two that would be probably sold to the sides on that left side.
While they're looking for that particular one, I do have another follow-up for you, just because we're looking at these figures. In the report that you were referring to on Figure six and Figure eight, it talks about the existing levels of service on Figure six as compared to the build levels of service on Figure eight. And it looks as if, looking now at the Creek Road, because I didn't focus on that, all of the, all of the levels of service increase at the intersection of Creek Road and Bridgeboro Road, you know, comparing between existing levels and build levels. For example, coming down Bridgeboro Road and making a right onto Creek Road, goes from Level VB to BC. Coming up Creek Road to make a left onto Bridgeboro Road goes from a Level CD to CE. So you would agree with me that all the level service, all the level of services at that intersection, if this is built, are going to be worse, correct?
No, what I'm saying is that what you've already approved in the township to get to the no build levels of service create the differences.
Well, let me just understand that, because if the existing level, for example, looking at Figure six, it says overall, under that, it says County 636, which is Creek Road, if you were to make a left of, under the existing levels, onto Bridgeboro Road, it says C slash D, what does that mean?
That means the morning peak hour would be a level service C, and the afternoon peak hour would be a level service D.
And then if you look at Figure eight, that same location says C slash E, correct?
Yeah, if you jump past Figure seven.
Okay, so tell me the significance then of Figure seven, which is, well, Figure seven says CE, Figure eight says CE.
Correct.
So the E is an increase, is a, well, I call it worse, correct? It's a lower level of service.
It's lower based on what's already been approved in the township, and we won't be lowering it beyond that with our proposal.
So in other words, that's gonna happen no matter what?
Correct, or if it gets built.
Yeah, or if it gets built, that's gonna be the level of service.
So if it gets built, the level of service will decrease from D to E at that particular...
No, these other projects that have been approved by Delran, if they're built, that will create that level service E change.
I'm informed by the engineer that that left-hand turn lane is about 700 feet. This is an existing exhibit that I put up there. It is the A4 colorized site plan. Yeah. And the engineer used his scale and informed me that that left-hand turn lane is about 700 feet.
That's the entire turn lane?
Yes.
Do we have the measurement from the entrance to the site to where it narrows at Hartford Road?
Say that again, from?
So the turn lane only impacts coming from Hartford Road into the site, correct? Because the turn lane, you wouldn't go to the turn lane.
Yeah, there's no left-hand turn lane.
There's no left-hand turn lane coming from Bridgeboro. So the area would be from the entrance of this new proposed site, that entrance main, towards Hartford Road to where the end, the actual turn lane. Because there's a yellow hash mark probably right, I would say probably in front of the pediatric center, the dentist's office.
So, is this Mr. Strecker?
Yeah, so Mr. Strecker is answering the question, and he said it's 250 feet from what?
From the center of the new driveway to the suburbly limit of the center of the turn, with the hatch.
Okay, did you get that?
Correct.
Okay. And Mr. Strecker, you were still sworn in from the last time?
I am.
Okay.
So basically, is that two tractor-trailers could sit in that left-hand lane waiting to turn left?
Closer to four.
Oh, okay.
They're approximately 76-foot wheelbase, correct?
67 is the worst case.
With space in between?
Yeah, plus the space in between, so three to four.
Two fifty, divided by 67.
That's the existing, correct?
Yes, that's existing, correct.
While people are doing math, any reason why we don't count Castleton and Nicholas in these levels of service on maps?
I'm sorry.
There's Castleton Road and Nicholas Road that aren't accounted for on these maps for all the levels of service existing.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't do any counts at those locations.
Okay.
Castleton, directly across from this future site driveway, with a development that has roughly 37 units in it, compared to Natalie, which is like eight units. Okay, we did not do any counts at that location, so a future development?
Nope, it's there, it's been there for
Since 96.
Since 96 and 90.
In terms of the alignment, yeah, we did not do any updated counts at that location.
Yeah, it's a little bit off, you can actually see at the bottom of the map there.
Yes.
It's on your map, it's just not accounted for on this.
Oh, down there, that's Castleton.
But a huge development that also attaches to Summer Hill.
Natalie is the other existing, well, what's the other one?
Natalie Nicholas.
Nicholas is, it's a U for, for Natalie, so Nicholas is technically directly across from that.
First, to answer your question, it's roughly 70 feet. The WP67.
I'm sorry, Ed, what did you say?
Roughly 70 feet.
Three trucks, if you're lucky, if everyone pulls tight, 250 feet, what they have now is 21, 200.
Kim, I think we're back to you, I, I, you're good, okay. Jack, do you have questions?
No, I'm good, Mr. Strecker.
I have a question.
Yes, you're good, Mary.
I'm curious, you said you did the study 50/50 with the direction they were coming out of the facility, but knowing that area, if a truck wants to get on 130, wouldn't it be easier for them to go left, to go out to 130? Same as if they wanted to get to 295, make that left and then the right onto Creek Road? So is it disproportionate to do 50/50? I mean, what would the reason of a truck going right and then right onto Hartford?
Yeah, I believe that was more concern of the board, so we assigned traffic in that direction to look at worst case.
So worst-case scenario, 50/50?
I, I can speak to this real quick, they had all the movements going in a single direction last time.
Right, I heard that, I heard that, yeah, yeah.
The other part of that, Mary, is?
I'm just wondering, why, my question is, so it was answered, worst-case scenario, you did 50/50, but realistically, it probably is not going to be based on the direction that most of the trucks are gonna head for.
In other words, it, it's probably gonna be, in reality, somewhere in between the two reports that were provided to the board, whereas the first report had, I think, 100% going left, and understandably, the board said, hey, you know, we're not going to the right, now you've used 50/50, the reality of the situation is, it's most likely gonna be somewhere in between 50/50 and 100% going to the left.
Agreed.
Thank you.
I have you right in, left out, yes.
If you go into that site and you put in your GPS, someone that doesn't know the area, and you want to get back to Pensalkin, I'm assuming that it's gonna take you down Hartford, it's gonna take you in the direction of Pensalkin versus away from Pensalkin, up onto 130, the opposite direction, making that left, just.
Yeah, your GPS could do that, yes.
Right, so if someone's not coming from the area, I think that's where you're gonna get that, people turning right out of there, that don't know the area.
Right, or if there's a lot of traffic, they're gonna turn right because they can't make a left-hand turn there.
Well, again, we, we looked at it pretty split, but I, I concur that I think it's gonna be a much heavier right in, left out.
You add 60-some feet into Hartford corners any time of day, and you're, you're in trouble.
Based off of that, those that know the site might choose to go left to avoid that intersection, right?
Correct.
So, you know.
I think, if they're familiar. Yeah, just my experience with Conway, I think they would get left out of the site.
Do you have any, um, is there any evidence that trucks will take the easiest path to drive a truck through?
Is there any evidence?
Rather, rather than going through a busy intersection and making a right, is that what you're thinking?
You're looking for the word speculation.
Yes, yes.
With all of the applications I've done that have had truck professional drivers involved, they're usually looking for the easiest, quickest path. That's been my experience.
Questions, Dave? Ryan?
Yep.
Chris?
I accept one, Craig, he might be able to help us, what is the weight restriction limitation on Creek Road?
That would be, I believe it's four tons.
Four tons, and what does a 53-foot tractor trailer weigh?
I thought it was five, or at least I thought that's what I saw on the slide, it's either four or five, but it's Creek Road that's between 130 and Bridgeboro.
And Creek Road between Bridgeboro Road and 295 is 12 tons?
You're driving the street right now.
Yeah. I just pulled up on it and it's saying that.
I don't know, professional driver.
The bridge has 12. The bridge. Range weight limit, 12 tons. I'm almost done without a mask. At 117 Creek Road, you can see them.
Yeah, we're, we're spun past them. Yeah, 12 tons coming from that direction, but go to the other side, there's a difference.
It'd have to be the same if the bridge is the same.
No, I think there's, there's something.
Where you try, where you try to like?
Other, yeah, all the way up.
Like at 130?
No.
That creek?
Go all the way?
Yeah, it's probably right as you're coming to Morrisville, before you hit Water's Edge. Cause everybody pulls over right in front of Water's Edge with a tractor trailer.
Yeah, it's not. I should just let you drive. That's a good idea. Not so easy, is it? I don't know, maybe use a snack.
I don't know.
I would take, take to assume, Ed, that the, the bridge is 12 tons, if it's 12 tons one way
The bridge is 12 tons that way.
And it's 12 tons the other way.
Further up from the other direction.
Problem is, the bridge won't necessarily be the road.
Correct.
No question, I'll do it virtually.
And is the, that is, and this is, is Creek Road a county road?
Yes.
So technically, the county road should be built to the county specs, but the bridge limits the specs?
At Creek and Settleton, there's also a sign that says, "Bridge weight limit 12 tons," so.
Nope, I am wrong, it is 12 tons. Question, the no build to the build, the only thing, at, at least from my awareness that we have approved, is that commercial office-based building that's going in there. And from my memory, and granted, my memory is terrible, the, the traffic for that was negligible, they were, they were predicting, you know, one car per building, e- even in peak hours, it, it had a negligible effect. Do you have a list of what the approved items that you're tracking for, for the no build to the build?
Yeah.
Is that in, there were four somewhere, did I miss it?
Did they talk about that earlier?
Page four, at the top, it says, "These developments include the approved things at Delran, and the Timber Ridge at Delran residential development," so those are the two.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Jay, Ed, do you have follow-up?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Ed, you, you were also in that?
Yeah.
Anybody else on the board have follow-up questions right now?
No.
Okay, all right, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Robb-Tar. Our next witness is not an expert witness, it is Francis Shields from The Applicant. Shields. You don't, we don't need your licenses, cause you're not an expert, but you do need to be sworn in.
You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth before this board?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Shields, so you work with The Applicant. The name of this company is 3005 Bridgeboro Road Industrial LLC, what's the parent company?
Criterion Group LLC.
Okay, can you tell us a little bit about, or what's your, your, your role with Criterion Group?
I'm a project manager with Criterion Group LLC.
And one of your jobs is primarily managing the site?
Correct, correct, yes.
So can you give the board a little bit of, of information about who Criterion is, what they do?
Absolutely, so Criterion was founded in 2003 in Queens Astoria. For about 15 years, their primary, primary focus was multifamily residential. And about 2017, they started the foray into industrial properties. Since about 2018, Criterion Group has acquired and manages approximately 65 industrial properties from Worcester, Massachusetts, down to Miami, Florida, and then into the Gulf of America. And, you know, our focus has been acquiring sites that were, you know, previously in rough shape, kind of mom-and-pop operations, and transforming them into, you know, first-class industrial sites that are fit for high-quality, you know, national or regional tenants.
Thank you. So you've done what you're proposing at similar sites, you, you've taken sites that are, you know, not up to modern standards as far as stormwater management landscaping, and you have transformed them into efficient sites?
That's correct, yes.
And with success, I'm assuming?
Yes, absolutely.
And that management experience has given you the ability to manage sites such as this, in locations such as this, where you are in, in and around neighborhoods, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Very good, and anything else you want to say about the company and how you operate the site?
Uh, you know, just, we, we focus on, you know, making sure we're complying with all applicable ordinances, following the rules. You know, we have a team, about 15 members, but we, you know, retain local experts in every city-state that we operate in. We try to, you know, make sure we're hiring the best, and, you know, focusing on, you know, making sure that whatever our end use is, is, you know, fits well within the community.
And we submitted, it was as exhibit A1, Statement of Proposed Operations, it's right here, and, you know, it, it has the basic limitations of what you're gonna do at this site, and you guys are gonna abide by that?
Absolutely, yes.
And adhere to all federal, state, and local regulations?
Of course, yep.
And try to be a good neighbor?
Absolutely.
And the property's gonna be leased to a single tenant?
Yes, single tenant.
And you will ensure that they need to adhere to the limitations on the Statement of Proposed Operations, all of the testimony tonight, and if you were to receive the benefit of an approval, any of the conditions in the approval itself?
Yes, absolutely, you know, we typically lease these sites to a single tenant who's, you know, under a triple net lease, who's typically responsible for the site's operations, however, if they fail to comply with those obligations, which they typically don't, you know, we immediately step in and make sure it's taken care of.
Your, your experience is that?
So, wait, wait, so under you, under a triple net lease, they're responsible for maintenance of the site and the operation, and you, you step away?
Uh, yes, unless they fail to, you know, meet those obligations, which
So what assurance does, does the township have that those maintenance agreements, other than the recording of the stormwater management plan and the stormwater management obligations, what assurance does the township have that they will, your triple net lease tenant will be a good neighbor and compliant? I mean, obviously, they have to get the site plan approval book, but are there issues relating to operation of the site?
I was gonna say, you know, we screen our tenants carefully and make sure that they are high-quality operators, and as I said, if they, you know, for some reason failed to meet those obligations, we would immediately step in.
And I'm assuming that in your leases, you require them to maintain the sites to a very high standard, that of a first-class facility?
Absolutely, yes.
That's explicitly in your leases?
Correct, yes.
You know, in, in greater length, obviously, and in any lease for this site, you will be willing to incorporate all the terms, obligations, and conditions in a approval resolution and the testimony, if you receive the benefit of an approval?
Yes, absolutely, you know, we specifically reference this approval. Potential approval.
Very good. I think that's it for direct for Mr. Shields, so the board has questions?
Regarding the, I think you just spoke about, you, you won't step in unless there's a problem with the, the company that leases from you, right? You won't step in to correct it unless there's a, there's a problem, correct?
Uh, we'd step in if they failed to, you know, comply with whatever regulations are imposed on them.
The, Mr. Shields, you understand that the, the approval resolution is not, if you receive, everything that I'm gonna say is based on, you know, getting it approved from this board, that approval runs with the land, and not just to Criterion, you understand that?
Yes, absolutely.
Which means that, you know, whether it's in the lease or not, the tenant needs to comply with everything in that approval resolution, as well as all the testimony provided by your professionals?
Correct, yes.
And then that's gonna be included in the lease, like, that was the testimony?
Yes, that'll be specifically in the lease.
So if there is a problem, that, that problem would be, you know, basically them not complying with this approval and testimony?
Yes.
And you'd step in immediately?
Absolutely.
And my question is, that you'd step in, though, after there's a violation, correct?
Uh, if there was a violation that the tenant failed to cure after being notified of such, yes.
You're not monitoring it to prevent violations, correct?
Oh, you know, we are, we, you know, employ colliers as our local property management team in each market we operate in, they conduct regular site visits to ensure, you know, preemptively that, you know, the tenant's complying with all applicable regulations, which would include the conditions of this approval.
But you just testified that you don't step in until there's a violation, and if that's the case, that would mean that whatever the violation is, whether it be noise, whether it be lighting, whether it be the trucks blocking the road, whatever the violation is, you're not taking remedial action until after the citizens of Delran have suffered from that violation, is that true?
Not necessarily, you know, if our local property manager identified something that could rise to a level of, you know, receiving enforcement from the, the county, then, you know, we would step in preemptively.
Or the municipality.
Municipality, apologies.
And, and, and Mr. Chairman, are you referring to the technical word violation, and I think maybe you're referring to, you know, a violation of the lease that they are not adhering to the standards of, of what's required by the lease, which is, might be a higher standard than a violation, a technical violation, a zoning violation, or municipal violation, correct?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I'm speaking specifically about, if this were to be approved, there would be conditions, the site plan conditions, et cetera, as we've discussed at length here. If the tenant were to violate those conditions, or be in violation of it, then, say, for example, Ashley Crossings might be the individuals who are impacted by that, you wouldn't step in in Criterion until after someone spoke up and said, hey, for the last week, these trucks have been idling 10 feet from my house, right?
Unless we learned of the potential infringement prior to that.
How do you find out?
Our local property managers who are doing, you know, typically weekly site visits.
Well, I think this could be solved with the condition in the resolution that they're, you know, required to monitor the site when it's leased to any tenant, to proactively prevent any violations of the approval, that's something you would agree to, right?
Yes, happy to do so, and it's, it's what we typically do as well.
Yeah, you're, you're gonna be doing that regardless of whether it's in the approval or not.
Yep.
So you're happy to agree to such a condition, right?
Correct, yes.
So I have a follow-up question from a while ago now, from earlier tonight, that you were gonna speak to regarding the storage versus the repair, so I'm reading through the Statement of Proposed Operations.
Yeah, I said that the planner was gonna provide testimony on that, not Mr. Shields.
Well, not from this perspective, but the facility itself, can, can you speak to what, incorporating what's the maximum service day? And you have listed in here, you know, the repairs are gonna be anywhere from a day to 120 days. You know, currently, it's a one-story shop building with four drive-through days. Generally speaking, you know, there's a maximum service day that you'd be able to operate, I would imagine, in terms of repairs, is that something you can speak to, or is that a planner?
I believe that, I, I have to defer to our planner on that. I believe that, I have to defer to our planner on that.
You're talking about a vehicle that may be stored on-site, being repaired for 120 days, but this isn't a junkyard, and I get that, but frankly, my vehicle's taking 120 days to get repaired, that's a pretty bad vehicle.
I think that there's gonna be testimony to that, but I'll answer what that testimony is going to be. And that is that this site is not solely for truck repair, truck and trailer repair. It is also for storage, and planner will provide more color on that.
My understanding was it was for storage with some repair.
That's correct, yeah.
And this is saying that I may have a vehicle here for 120 days, which, you know, seems like beyond just repair. That seems like that would be extensive work necessary for a vehicle.
No, I mean, I think that's when the truck would be stored, and our truck and trailer would be stored beyond repair, or not just for repair.
So I think that the way that it reads versus the average duration of stay of trucks and door trails would depend on the operator, but generally range from one to 120 days. So I think that's understood from a trailer perspective, but I think to Jay and mine's question is in relation to the actual repairs that would be performed in themselves.
Two-fold, the actual repairs, but that paragraph is referring solely to repairs. Trucks are repaired, that would stay, if they need to be repaired longer, they'll be towed, that type of thing. So I guess it's much clarification as well.
The reason I'm asking this is because it's more related to a traffic movement perspective. It's a storage, or you have somebody dropping off a trailer, potentially picking up a trailer, which I would assume they're empty either way from the prior testimony that I recall being provided. But the repair aspect, you're dropping off, there's a maximum number of storage spaces, if I recall, it's specifically for the repair locations, if there's an emergency overnight that you dropped off. So the planner is speaking to that, not the applicant's representative?
Yeah, I think he's gonna provide clarification. And I'm sorry, I still don't fully understand your question. I read this, so if you ask it again, maybe I'll...
Maybe I'm just, I'm...
Multiple questions.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, maybe I'm just a little perplexed, the planners testifying to that versus the applicant's representative.
The planner's gonna testify to the actual use of the property and how, you know, trucks and trailers will sometimes be on-site, you know, generally maybe up to 120 days.
But the owner's rep wouldn't know that?
You could testify to it as well, so this came from, you know, from...
Yeah, you know, it really, you know, as we noted, the Statement of Proposed Operations, there's no identified tenant yet, so, you know, speaking to the operations of a hypothetical tenant is difficult. But, you know, some tenants, you know, trucks might be brought on the site, not necessarily for repair at all, they're just storing trucks there, and they could be held there for a period of up to 120 days.
It's a fair point that you may or may not know exactly what's going to be on-site because it's, you know, you're not sure your tenant's gonna be. But in the reverse, we're looking at a use variance application here, and use variances are generally restricted to specific uses. So that's why we're asking these questions.
Understood, yeah.
I get that that's why Craig will be addressing those specific items. You being the owner rep, I mean, I would assume you would know more about the vehicles and what's on-site than Craig would. He's gonna know more about the planning, testimony, and planning information, but you would know more about the actual vehicles, storage, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, you know, once there's an end user identified, absolutely, we would. And, you know, because, as you mentioned, this is a variance, you know, any potential tenant that would be, you know, eventually occupying the site would be, you know, limited to operating in, you know, the manner of, you know, what's approved here. So kind of the bucket of tenants we'd seek would have to, you know, fit cleanly within, you know, the operations that are permitted here.
One of the items addressed at the last meeting was that the intent was that these trailers will be empty on-site. They're not going to be full, or if there's one that may be full, it'll be an emergency situation. But the intent is not to be using these trailers as storage facilities for materials. This will be somebody parking a truck here, you know, hopefully overnight, then go pick something up, but if it's not picking it up, it's not gonna be sitting here. You know, this is gonna become an, the fact of a storage facility of truck and trailers, is that the intent?
That's the intent, yes.
And it will be mostly empty?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Beyond the intent, this will not be a pseudo, you know, 3PL, third-party logistics-type site, pseudo-warehouse-type site, pseudo-cross-docking-type site, correct?
That's correct, yeah. We, you know, we actually, from the owner's perspective, we don't want, you know, goods being stored on this property.
Is that in the lease? Is that restriction in the lease?
Because there's no tenant in place, there's no lease in place, but, you know, we would make sure that a potential user would fit within that scope of operations.
It would have to be in the lease, right? Because the lease is going to have to comply with the approval from this board, and the board, there was testimony last night on the last hearing, and then you just testified that there will be no, you know, third-party logistics, cross-docking, warehousing. This is not intended to be storage of goods. Occasionally, a truck might arrive, a broken-down truck might arrive with goods in it, and then those goods will leave the site potentially in a different truck, but that's only to get the goods away from the site. The intent and the use of this site is not to store goods.
That's correct, yes.
So that, by a tenant agreeing to the terms of the approval, they're agreeing to that, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So when the repairs are being done, are the bays closed?
Typically, yes.
And how often, what type, is anybody gonna testify as to the frequency and types of deliveries to be made to the site?
You know, based on our proposed operations, there will be typically, you know, daily deliveries of, you know, supplies and parts during, you know, typical business hours.
I think the engineer provided testimony as well on that point, that, you know, there could be up to daily deliveries on, with parts and so forth, but without a specific user designated for the site, you know, very specific testimony cannot be provided on that.
Yeah, I don't have that in my notes, but I could...
I do know as well.
Okay. Do you currently, does your company currently manage any locations that are local to us right now?
Yes, we have a facility 400, 500 Creek Road in Delanco, New Jersey.
Just to go back, my apologies that it was not the engineer, but it is in Statement of Proposed Operations.
Right, that's what I was asking, that's kind of big.
Okay, you want to provide? You answered it.
Yeah, I think Sean said, you know, really, to give a really detailed, specific answer there, we need to, you know, have identified the tenant.
But you do not anticipate this property having a high level of deliveries, you know, several times a day? It's not something that would generally occur, right?
Not typically, no.
How could you know that if you don't know who's gonna be leasing?
Well, that's why, yeah, you know, not typically, but, you know, I just have to think of a real specific answer here, would have to, you know, ultimately know the end user.
The question you just gave to Counsel's question was pure speculation, is that true?
The answer.
I mean, the answer that you just gave to Counsel's question was speculative, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
What type of deliveries would you have here? This is just a storage facility, you know, I have empty trailers here, stored for whatever reason. I mean, granted, you have a, the way I understand it, kind of a minor repair facility. I can imagine that maybe there may be some parts coming for a specific issue, but what types of, you know, storage, loading, deliveries would be necessary here? With some of your similar sites?
You know, I expected, you know, given the, you know, repair nature of the site, it would be materials and goods related to those repairs.
But you need something specific for a truck? You know, you have, like, we see the auto parts cars running around all over the place delivering, something like that?
Yeah.
That's why your answer is speculative, but because of the use is not generally a heavy delivery demand type of use, that's why you can speculate on it.
Correct, yes.
Mr. Shields, I'm looking now at a Google Maps screen of 400 Creek Road. Are you familiar with the facility?
Not 400 specifically.
Okay, 450, okay. Regarding the truck facility that you've mentioned on Creek Road in Delanco, it's another truck storage facility, correct?
It's not currently being used as that. You know, we're actually going through site plan approval right now with the township of Delanco. It's gonna be ultimately used by a vehicle retailer.
Okay, so...
They have a pending application, it'll be heard in three weeks.
Okay.
And the site was previously approved in 2023 for use by Vroom, which is an online car dealership similar to Carvana, which has since gone out of business. And the application currently before Delanco is for Carvana to move into the site.
Okay, and so the site that we're talking about here, at least in this picture, it looks like it shows truck and trailers, but it's bordered by a massive parking lot, correct?
That's correct, yes.
On the one side, and then on another side, it's bordered by the Delanco Inspection Center, correct?
Correct, yes.
On the other side, there's Creek Road, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Right, Creek Road runs along the property, right?
Yeah.
So there's no adjacent residential property next to it, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Indeed, there's no adjacent 55 and up community immediately adjacent to that property, isn't that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's close.
There is, there is a...
It's close, it's not gonna...
Pretty close.
But it's across the road, though, it's across the road and down the road, correct?
Correct, yes.
Good.
And does Centurion, and I guess Colliers as well, currently manage the property as it exists today with the current use? Or would you come in new if this is approved?
At Bridgeboro?
Yes.
Yes, we do. And Colliers is also the...
Do you have any proposed changes of the current operations with the upgrades that they're seeking approval for today? Or would it be basically existing operations just with an upgraded site?
Ultimately, it depends on the end tenant, that's gonna determine the scope of the operations. Yeah.
So are you saying that Criterion manages the site currently?
You know, Criterion is the management company that behind, you know, we share a common owner with 3005 Bridgeboro Road Industrial LLC. So we're the managers, and then we use, you know, local, on-the-ground managers because our offices are in Astoria.
Right, right, I mean, you're the manager for the way that the site is currently operating?
The site as it exists today is kind of in a site of, obviously, it's in a state of transition from when Criterion's affiliate bought it to, hopefully, from your perspective, whatever's the proposed use if this gets approved, correct?
Correct, yes.
So basically, as it's, you have not made any upgrades to the site or heavily used the site, you've kind of minimally used it to keep the existing approval going since you purchased it?
Yes, you know, we've been working through this approval for some time now.
Okay.
Yes.
When did you obtain it?
I believe it was the middle of 2021.
Thank you. When I asked, do you manage any of the local locations? You currently manage where the site is now also? You mentioned Delanco, but you manage their current site?
Yes, that's correct.
You own it?
We own it, yes.
How is it managed? What do you do to manage this site currently?
Excuse me, apologies. You know, we just work with, you know, now there's no tenant operating at the site, so we just use Colliers to, you know, handle, you know, basic maintenance of the site, you know, landscaping, making sure there's no trespassing on the property, you know, making sure the building stays up to code, things like that.
But making sure that the site is not being used in a manner which is in excess of the prior approvals, who's responsible for that?
That'd be ownership's responsibility.
Aren't you owner? Don't you own the site?
Yes.
Okay.
Questions to the board? Anyone?
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
And finally, our last witness is Craig Randkamp, professional planner.
So Mr. Randkamp has been accepted as an expert in professional planning before this board, and I believe before a number of boards. You're welcome to spread his credentials on the record, but I believe the board will accept him as an expert in professional planning.
Any objections to the board?
No.
No.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your license is still in good standing, correct?
It is.
Just for the sake of the record, could you just state your first and last name?
Yes, it's Craig, C-R-E-I-G-H, Randkamp, R-A-H-E-N-K-A-M-P. I'm sorry, I have to amend that, you said first name. My first name's John, I just never use it.
I didn't know that.
There's a long story behind it, I'll spare you.
So, Mr. Randkamp, you are a professional planner. Since there's a lot of people in the audience tonight, could you just kind of basically give an overview of what a professional planner does?
That was not a question I was expecting.
Sorry, didn't even catch you off guard.
A planner is charged essentially with understanding the material that is the province of specific experts, traffic, architecture, engineering, relating that back to policy issues, master plan and zoning, and putting together that package of material under the criteria that boards use in reviewing applications, to try and make something coherent out of all of the information that you heard.
And one of the things that you do is you look at whether a site is suitable for a particular use, correct?
Yes.
So you've been working on this application for a while, and, you know, can you tell the board whether, in your opinion, this site is suitable for this use?
If we could. Might as well do that before I start talking.
This would be Exhibit A7, and it is a three-page aerial of the site.
So if we do A7, A, B, and C, A, all of them are from Google Earth using the timeline series that were originally acquired from the state of New Jersey. So if New Jersey's aerial sold to Google, then we can then access through their timeline series. A would be dated 12, 2002, December 2002. B is December 2010, and C is October 2020. And, can I get one back? They all went away. And there's probably some for the audience as well. I brought a bunch. Thank you. All right, so I'm not gonna jump into those right away, but just figured we'd get that out of the way. And the other administrative thing, so that I don't have to repeat everything that you heard from our previous experts, I'll say for the record that I was here for the testimony of Rob Strecker and Dave Schraubshire. And to the extent they described the site and the things that are happening here from the site plan perspective, I adopt their testimony as if given by me. So I'm not gonna go back over everything they did, and we'll try and relate what you heard to the decision you ultimately need to make. Before I get back to the use issue, and I will come back to the use issue, I promise, and describe what this is, I want to touch lightly on the history of this site. As the board has already heard, this has been a long-running issue, issue being a polite word for it, in which a local operator did things, and some things may have been approved, and some things may not have been approved. And all of that leads to a controversy in which the buyer of the site thinks they have rights to do various and sundry things, some of which are probably an over-expectation of what was actually approved. And the town has a perspective of what had been approved historically. And somewhere in that mix is a controversy. And one of the ways we solve controversies is through a use variance application. And one of the ways we solve controversies is through a use variance application. I'll get to the specific purposes of the act that allow Purpose M to be used to settle these kinds of controversies. But that's what brings us here. So as the chairman was asking, you know, would you put this use next to a residential development? Starting from scratch, it's probably not the best idea in the world. But the reality is you have a non-conforming use on at least the core parcel here. There is some level of trucking. We think a lot, you think a little perhaps, but some level of activity is already occurring on the site. And the question is, can we tame that historical mess in a way that makes sense for everybody? That we can add things that make the site better than the existing conditions? Or even if the town won on every issue that's in dispute, might the site plan with the amenities that we're providing be better than just going back to the non-conforming use the way it is? So that's the underlying theory of what's before you tonight. Can we collectively do a better job on this site going through this site plan process than simply arguing about what was or wasn't approved, what expectations are or aren't legal, and going down that highly litigious, expensive, ugly path? Can we get to someplace that makes sense? So touching on the history, it's not my intent to litigate it. I'm not trying to state our position. But we know, for example, that a use variance was approved in 1986 for a trucking terminal in what was the ASC Senior City District. That's a historical fact that exists. In 1998, we know that a D variance adding a driving school to the site was denied. So there was at least a record of this, the prior owner trying to do more and more things with the site. The board denied adding a driving school in 1998. And sometime after 1998, I didn't do the Oprah request and hunt it down, the land was rezoned to A1, other than our little wetland corner of NC. And I couldn't find a justification or a story that anybody really expected a farm was going to appear here where you had this non-conforming use, other non-conforming uses. This was kind of the area in which weird stuff had happened historically in the town. To me, the agricultural rezoning at that time was more like a holding zone. But I'm not asking for an argument with your planner. I think it's just clear that nobody could really expect that a farm was going to pop up where all of these uses were carving up this particular area. But that happened sometime after 1998. And as I said, a small portion of Lot 48 is in the NC1 neighborhood commercial, never really practical and mostly wetland area. So sort of scratching our head, you know, what was the zoning trying to accomplish? But that's the pattern. That's what we have as facts on the ground. So turning to the aerials that I have given you. 2002 is before the prior landowner started expanding to the north and the south, and you'll see that as we go. It's our belief, and I know your planner believes a little different, a planner and engineer believe a little differently, that this is more or less what the use variance would have allowed. It may be a little bit different on the edges, but essentially, a core trucking operation was permitted by the use variance on the core lot. It's something like this. And this is a historical, this is what was actually happening in 2002. You see trailers stored to the rear, to the south, and to the north of the site, to a very dense degree, if you will. 2010 is where we see some of the expansion that we absolutely know was not approved, to the north and south. If you flip back and forth between 2002 and 2010, you'll see to the south, there's a little curved crescent shape that went into the woods that clearly was not part of the original parcel. And in the north, heading towards Bridgeboro Road, there's an area of paving that didn't exist in 2002. And then I had 2020, which is before the current owners started de-tenantizing the site, started diminishing how much activity. So you see the trucks to the west have disappeared. They're now vans of some kind, whether they're mail trucks or delivery vans, they're a smaller vehicle, but they're still parked all the way back to the edge of what had been used in the past. And here, you see the violations to the north and south have expanded much further than they had previously. And we're not even arguing on those north-south expansions. They were clearly not approved. So that's part of what the prior user did that we're trying to fix as part of this application. So the point of those aerials is to show, at least in the 2002, the full extent of the operation that was occurring on the site, certainly not secretive, it was clearly being used in the open, before the north and south encroachments started happening. And I think what's important is when you compare that plan to what's before you here, what we're doing are a couple of things, and it's adding the stormwater management that uses up a significant amount of the land to that north and south that had been being expanded into, and adding basins into the core. So rather than bringing an application to you and saying, let's, you know, the old guy started using these other parcels, let's just throw them in. We've thrown them in, but the amount of new green and stormwater that we're providing offsets that land area in a large way. So that's all I'm trying to do with the aerials, not triggering an argument about what is or wasn't approved, just sort of the facts on the ground as we've seen them. As you guys have heard many times, a use variance has three parts to it. Why should we do this? The special reasons? How doesn't this interfere with the town achieving other goals and objectives? It's the intent and purpose of the zone plan to use the legally used. And lastly, can we do it without causing substantial harm to the neighbors? And tonight, I'm going to take them in that order. Purpose one, I'm sorry, Purpose I is the desirable visual arrangement through good civic design. It's a lot of words, but we know from the case Burbidge Mine Hill that cleaning up and improving a non-conforming site can be the basis for a use variance in and of itself. If the benefits that are accruing from upgrading the site, making it better, makes sense to a community, that can be a sufficient basis for a use variance. And the things here that I would point out that you've heard from the other witnesses, we're getting rid of four curb cuts or getting rid of three. We're coming down to net one from four. So improving the overall safety of the interface between the property and the roadways very much improved stormwater management. The, I don't even know what color to call it, celery areas that you see on Exhibit, that would be A4, A4. On Exhibit A4, the celery-colored areas are the stormwater management basins that have been added in multiple areas of the site, which obviously don't exist if we go back to the, to continuing to use the non-conforming use. That would simply go on the way it was in the area that whatever ultimately we determined was the edge of that. So you have much improvement in terms of stormwater quality and control. Paved and delineated spaces. It's not the wild, wild west that you see in the aerials. You actually have a site plan on A4, which has clear circulation, clear and safe circulation. That actually makes sense. Turning templates were put on them to show you how they work. Clear spaces delineated rather than that wild, wild west that you just fit in whatever you can fit. Much improved frontage, landscaping along Bridgeboro, basins, but also plantings between the basins and the roadway. A very much cleaned up front of the site, an aesthetic improvement that I think would be very important for the community overall. And a very much improved rear buffer to residential development. So you saw in 2002 trailers parked way to the back of the site. We've now got, I believe, Mr. Strecker's testimony, it was 152 to 165 feet from the property line to the edge of pavement. So a very significant buffer, significant landscaping going in that area to create separation that wouldn't exist if we go back to the non-conforming use. In addition, the actual storage of trailers is another three spaces in, so roughly 60 feet. So roughly 220 feet from the property line to this permanently stored trailers. These areas are activity areas where a truck can be used to cagens. So that would only be an operation during business hours for the site. So movements are only happening in this area, again, separated by all of this, during daytime operations on the site, and the closest stored trailers are about 220 feet plus or minus in that area. To me, that's a very substantial improvement, even in going back to just a continuation of the non-conforming use. I believe that what we've accomplished here is something that improves on that for everybody. Adding, as I said, adjoining lots, these are the areas where that encroachment occurred, to the north and to the south. You see to the north, most of this area where encroachment was is going to be used for a basin. In the south, it's about 50/50 between basin and some parking in this area, but that's basically making up for losing area in the middle so that we could have detention facilities in the middle of the site. So on balance, while we're using the entirety of the site, we're not increasing the overall amount of activity that could have occurred on the site in the past. We're using the additional land area to accomplish buffering and basins in ways that I think make sense. So on balance, I think the list of benefits for what is arguably an expansion of the non-conforming use makes sense in terms of becoming a better neighbor, both in the front and the back in stormwater, and overall, the site functions in a much better way. Counsel addressed this in asking a question to our traffic engineer, but it is worth emphasizing, there is no such thing as a no-build here. No-build is going back to whatever the litigation determines the non-conforming pre-existing use is. So there is some trucking operation on the core site that is the no-build condition. Where exactly that line gets drawn is down a road that I hope we don't have to travel. But there is some core truck operation here that would be that pre-existing non-conforming use. So that was Purpose I. And Purpose M is the coordination of public and private activities to more efficient use of the land. And this is a purpose we use as planners all the time when we have these kinds of controversies, that it makes sense to have a settled plan, if you will. Particularly happens in affordable housing, but also here. So I would suggest Purpose M is part of this as well. Everybody gets to save their litigation costs. And lastly, I want to talk about Purpose G, and this is where I get to address your professionals' questions about the nature of the use. Purpose G is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses to meet the needs of all the citizens of New Jersey. We have all very publicly been dealing with the explosion of warehouses. Everybody understands that between COVID and trade wars, we're now storing a lot more goods domestically than we ever have. And along with that goes the need for trucks to move those goods from factories to warehouses, from warehouses to factories, to ports and back. From 1990 to 2020, a survey by Slate Magazine had tractor-trailer vehicle miles doubled between 1990 and 2020. So a very significant increase in the number of trucks on our roads and the vehicle miles that they are traveling in the system.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again, tractor-trailer miles?
From 1990 to 2020, tractor-trailer vehicle miles doubled.
Thank you.
And the source is Slate Magazine did an expose, an article, July 27, 2023. Thank you. So we focused on the idea of what's happening in terms of warehouses. The question is, what happens to the trailers that are doing all of this work? Now, the one thing to understand first is that it's seasonal. There is not a uniform demand for trailers all the time that's uniform. If you think of department stores, and they're bringing in goods four times a year for each of the seasons, a couple of months or a month before that, there's a peak delivery for that particular store. The same thing happens with automobiles. They get brought in on cycles in terms of ships. So there are peak demands, there are diminishment demands. And the point is, where do the trailers go when we don't need them? The reality is, we don't have enough spaces. And I'll talk to some of the sources that say we don't have enough spaces in a minute. But I want you to understand the idea that on any given day, there are a whole bunch of trailers on the road, and on any given day, about 20 to 30% of the trailers on the road are parked someplace not being used because people are stocking trailers for their company because there will be a peak or there's been a disruption in global trade, and all of a sudden, they've got more trailers than they needed. They're not throwing them out. They've got to maintain them. These are adorable goods. So we need facilities around the country where trailers can rest when they're not being used. And part of resting, when a trailer is resting, is the opportunity for it to be repaired. So this is where repair has two parts to it, one of which is repairing the tractor, the truck itself. But the majority of it is repairing the trailers. When they come in for a month or a two-month stay, that's the opportunity that you can check their tires. You can see if somebody dented something, if the lock is broken. So all of the things that are on the trailer get to be repaired when it's in one of its hiatuses. So there is repair as a trailer gets parked on the site, somebody assesses it, surveys it, decides there are things that need to be done to it. It then rotates through the repair bay. Those things get done, and it goes back out. So yes, the primary purpose is restoring, but it's not, but repair and maintenance of those trailers goes along with the storing function. It's the storing function that gives you the time to do that assessment and repair work.
So the trucks that, in your view as planner, the trucks that are coming in, you're trying to make them safer by repairing them while they're on location?
Yeah, well, I'm focused on trailers first. I'm going to do trucks in a minute.
Okay, so just the trailers here.
The back half is coming in to be stored for a month.
Right.
It's a surplus trailer at the moment.
And you mentioned something.
And while it's in, it gets assessed, and while it's assessed, if something's inappropriate, it gets repaired.
Right, so like you mentioned, for example, the tires, correct?
Yes.
So presumably, there will be multiple trucks coming in that could potentially have, multiple trailers, I should say, coming in that have tires that need to be repaired, correct?
Sure.
So they'll be driving through Delrayn with tires that are not in repair before they get to this location, correct?
They're not exactly balled. They measure them at depth, and there's a point, just like you do with your car. You don't drive your car until the threads are showing. There's a point at which you decide to replace your tires.
So to stop here real quick, to.
Sure.
You piqued my interest with one of your comments regarding that there's, no pun intended, by the way, there's four times a year, roughly speaking, that you're going to have a higher intensity demand. Is that?
In one industry, that was an example. There are dozens of industries.
Your example, but let's use that piece, there's no tenant that's been identified.
Sure.
Is that incorporated in, and I understand you're not going to be able to answer this question, but is that incorporated into the traffic analysis that was done?
No. Nor is it in traffic for residential when the summer season is quiet and fall is busier. There are seasonal things that happen in life that we know about that have never been part of traffic studies.
Yes, but there are permitted uses and permitted zones, and they are considered when you're establishing zones of the area. This is a unique situation where we're looking to put a non-permitted use into a location where, you know, it's not allowed, it wasn't included in the master plan, it's been zoned appropriately. So that's something we do have to take into consideration is what potentially could be the peak impact. So that's why I think we're asking that question.
Yes, and the only thing I would add to your proposition is that there is a pre-existing non-conforming use of a disputed scale underlying this. Whether this is in fact more than that or not has not been determined, and I hope we never actually have to go through determining that.
I just want to caution you and the board about this. You keep referring to a dispute. There is no dispute. There is an approval which is in place. There is a use which is in place. There is no pending existing litigation relating to this. So I don't want the board to feel like they're being threatened with litigation or that there is pending litigation. I think you're drawing a fair comparison of this is what exists now, and hey, this is our proposal to make it better. But also, that's not really the standard for the use variance. The use variance is based upon what the standards are of the zone. And yes, there is an improvement to be made, but you have to compare it about, compare the site, and that's the burden of proof of showing what's, how the use does or how it is particularly suitable for this site, despite the fact that that's not a permitted use in the zone. I don't think you meant to say that. I think you're just trying to be.
Sure.
Just trying to be, to say, look, this is, I guess you're trying to soft pedal that fact that this is not, and I, existing site is, I'm just rambling, never mind. I think you get what I mean. I apologize. It's 9:15.
And I'm glad you raised that because it's absolutely not my intention to threaten the board. If that's the way I was coming across, I apologize. No threat is intended.
And I know you well enough to know that you didn't intend that, but you're just trying to highlight what you think are the benefits. But I think we.
Yes, but the foundation, the foundation is still Burbidge Mine Hill in which you're starting from an existing point in which there is a non-conforming use. So we're not starting from, this is a farm field, does this make any sense? We're starting from, this is a pirate trucking operation of various size with an existing approval. But we disagree with it.
Less than what's being operated on, but you're still bound by what's required and permitted in the zone. And what you're saying is there's a certain level of infrastructure already there.
Yes, and a certain level of impacts associated with that non-conforming use.
But there's, one of the sites received the approval. And we'll talk about that in a minute. But then there's the other sites that did not receive any approvals that have expanded onto the sites.
By the prior user, yes.
I'm not, not, look, I'm not claiming the yes, but by whomever.
Right.
It grew onto a site illegally. It grew onto a site illegally.
I just don't want to support the criteria that these bad things, and it's coming before...
No, no, no.
The criteria bought a site in an odd situation and is trying to fix it.
But it's one thing to say we had a preexisting use on a site that was approved to have a preexisting use.
Yep.
The zone changed, things happened in many years. It's another thing to say, well, we've encroached onto a completely different site, we're occupying a different site, and we should be able to receive a benefit of being a preexisting use on that site, and...
I didn't say that.
Certainly the impression you gave, at least that's the impression I received, if that's not the case. You know, you're saying that, well, you got an existing condition on this site, so we should start from that standpoint, whereas, you know, my opinion, we should start from the standpoint that it's expanded onto a different site, and that was a violation right there.
It was.
We should be starting from the standpoint of that other sites were not approved, did not have, what was there before? That's the standpoint I'm starting at, not at what's there illegally.
Right, and the proposition that I'm making for you and the board to consider is incorporating those sites into the core site that had the approval. And what happens is, the core site retreats from front and rear and adds stormwater management. So we're actually reducing the amount of activity on the core site in exchange for being able to use the new additional site that allow us to add stormwater management on those additional sites.
Which is your request to offset the impacts.
Yes.
In fact, okay, so I would say that's more negative criteria opposed to positive criteria. You're offsetting the impact.
If you offset them, you'll be good, it's a positive.
Yeah, okay.
Anyway, under Burberry Mine Hill, if you're improving the site, that can be a positive. And I absolutely agree with you that the expansion of the site to the north and the south was completely unapproved. That was a pirate operation from the prior owner. There's no justification for the expansion in the two directions. And I will leave to the lawyers to argue that it happened for so long that it happened, but that's not for me. But my argument to you is, we're adding so much to that core that could still be that old trucking operation, and making that so much better that it's worth adding the additional land so that we have the space to do the additional buffers, additional landscaping, and stormwater management. That there's a trade-off there, and it's a trade-off that I think makes sense.
Okay, that's your opinion?
Yep.
Obviously viable, and that makes sense.
Yep, and I definitely agree, just you understand what I'm saying.
Fair, yes.
Okay. Anyway, I was in the middle of Purpose G. Don't apologize necessary, that was useful. That's the role of the middle mile in the logistics industry. In terms of reports, we've got the U.S. Department of Transportation. "The scarcity of truck parking spaces across the country decreases safety for all highway users, exacerbates the industry's longstanding workforce challenges, contributes negatively to driver health and well-being, diminishes trucking productivity, and results in unnecessary greenhouse gas emissions." A 2010 study from the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, not the one for our district, there are three in New Jersey, this is the north, they just happen to have more staff and do more reports. They address the question of why is there a need for additional parking? The federal hours of rest requirements for drivers, that's less important here, we're not resting drivers. Staging for freight facilities, emergency truck parking, secure locations where drivers can park their tractors when off duty, and the storage of trailers, as I was talking about in terms of middle miles. So we have two studies talking about the need for this at the national and state level. And the last one is a New Jersey DOT statewide, 2003 statewide freight plan, that truck, this is more of an exhortation, "Truck parking should not be seen as an undesirable use, but as a requirement of regional logistics and its efficiency. The understanding and recognition that public and private organizations must provide truck parking as a necessary service is critical." So my only point in reading those three short quotes to you is to support the idea that under the MLUL, one of the basis for granting a use variance is need for a particular use. This is clearly a use that is in great need. We have expanded warehouses, we've expanded the use of trucks, and we have lagged in terms of this middle mile, quote-unquote, providing a parking area, resting spot for trailers that are not currently in use. So I had Purpose I for improvement of the site, and Purpose G for the need. The next prong that we're meant to address is the intent and purpose of the zone plan. One of the lenses through which we can look at this is Judge Wilson's decision in TWC Really. And the two things that are there that are important is that the properties around the perimeter of the site can still be used as zoned, that there's no interference in those other properties being used in a manner consistent with planning and zoning within the community. Here, we've got the Mine Hill situation, that the core area is already trucking. Expanding that to the south and north in the areas that we are doesn't have a direct impact on the ability of those adjoining parcels to be used as zoned. If we're going to pretend that agriculture could come, it's certainly not going to have a negative impact on agriculture on very large lot, single-family homes. And it allows for us to create the enhanced buffer on that core parcel to the rear and to the front. The second is whether it has an impact on frustrating other goals of the municipality. Clearly, this is not a food-producing area, that losing a little bit of this land is somehow impacting the agricultural economy in South Jersey or of the community. As I said, I think the egg zone was more of a holding zone than something that the master plan actually intended to occur here. So I don't think we're having a negative impact on the actual intent and purpose of zoning and planning in this particular area by having the marginal expansion to the existing nonconforming uses in the core. In terms of the third prong, it's a substantial detriment to the neighborhood, and as I've said, and as the aerials already show, the bad parts of this use already exist with the nonconforming use. Yes, we're making it bigger to the north and south to accommodate stormwater management and buffers, but all of the things that we said could happen in terms of our discussions with the other experts are things that already can happen if we simply go back to that core nonconforming use on the center parcel. I don't think we're significantly exacerbating what those impacts are, and I think, as I've said multiple times and won't repeat, I think we're making it better with this application. Better buffers, better frontage, and a net overall improvement on what this site looks like and how it will operate, instead of going back to the nonconforming use. And with that, you wanted to address repair of the trucks as opposed to the trailers. There were 13 spaces that were identified in the engineering testimony proximate to the repair center. The expectation is those are the spaces that are actually serving when trucks are actually the object of repair rather than trailers. There's no expectation that the trailer storage areas of the site are being used to store trucks in relationship to the repair function. The 13 is plenty in terms of scale to support the actual repair facility size that we have here.
Let me try to understand that.
Yes.
So the repair spaces shown are just for trucks, so that any repair to be conducted on the trailers, could be any space on here?
Well, the trailer's going to be brought in and parked. It will be assessed in its parking space, and then whether it needs to be moved to a repair facility or not will be determined after it's assessed. They're not likely to do assessment at the gate.
I can certainly understand assessment.
Okay.
Assessment makes sense, but you said that the 13 spaces were for truck repair.
Primarily, yes.
Or is that where all repair will happen?
Oh, repair's happening in the garages, in the building. There's not repair happening on-site.
Exterior, outside.
Right. And my answer to two is, the door closed would have been yes, but we got a softer answer from the owner.
Okay, so the repairs are only conducted within the building.
Correct.
A truck may be stored in those specific spaces, getting ready to move into the building to repair it, whereas a trailer may be stored anywhere on-site. And then when that needs to have its repair, scheduled to have its repaired, it'll be moved from wherever it is on-site.
Right.
Brought into the building, repaired, put back.
Right, that's the typical operation. As has been said multiple times, there is no specific tenant, but that's currently how this type of facility operates with multiple companies that I'm aware of.
So there's 291 spaces identified?
Yes.
Of which 10 are for employee parking?
Yes.
It's 291 plus 10.
Plus 10.
That's the 10. Okay, so 291, of which 13 are truck spaces designated, so that brings it down to 278 for trailer parking, if my math is correct. But the trailer spaces are larger, right?
Larger than...
Than the identified truck spaces.
There is room for a truck to pick up the trailer within the space.
No, it's a double stack. So this was going to be a question I had, this might find who was asking. So the 13 spaces identified from, I believe, previous testimony that was provided, that was going to be, truck and trailer would be pulling in, the vehicle would be getting assessed, or the trailer, and then you'd have a separation of that ultimately. The remaining spots on site, the 60-foot minimal space size, I'm not missing any here, that is specifically for a trailer storage only, double stack.
Right. Truck obviously has to go there to get it and drop it off, but they're not, trucks are not meant to be stored in those spaces.
But they fit there, don't they?
Well...
I think a W P 67 would not fit there, but if you have a smaller operational vehicle...
Oh, yes, if somebody's doing unit trucks, sure.
But is something of that nature going to be stored in, and, you know, excuse my naivety on this, how are the trailers themselves going to be moved? Is there an operational truck that's on-site to pivot the trailers and park them?
With the edge of my understanding, but yes, that's my understanding. That just like in an old-fashioned train yard, there is a yard engine that's doing that kind of thing, and then it'd be a truck, it may be a, I don't even know what to call them, little tractors.
So only the trailers are stored in the spaces, not the trucks?
Long-term, yes, right.
Okay, the trucks will only be stored, if necessary, for repair in those storage spaces?
Yes, I don't want to go too far to say that there couldn't be a truck overnight somewhere on the site, but they're not intended to be there, they're not stored there.
Okay, because that's important, because, again, we're looking at use variance, we want to be specific, so that...
Yes.
So there could potentially be a tractor and a trailer stored in those spaces.
Not stored.
Parked in those spaces.
For a short term, possibly parked, yes, not stored.
Me, short term's a couple hours.
What do you mean?
I'm trying to understand, because I don't want to be in a situation five years down the road from now, and all of a sudden, we're in zoning violations because we weren't specific.
Right.
So I need to know, you're saying, my first comment, I thought, was they're basically going to be just trailers in those spaces. Now, it's, there may be a tractor there with the trailer, and, you know, that's fine, I just need to know what we're referring to.
The intent is that trailers are stored.
The intent.
Let me finish my sentence. The board may impose a condition different than what I'm saying. My understanding of the way these yards operate, the trailers are stored, the trucks are not. You asked the question, does that mean that there could never be a truck other than in those 13 spaces at some particular one overnight? And I was just trying not to go that far. It's not the intent, it's not the way it operates, but if somebody comes in five minutes before closing, might they not do all the operations before they go home that night? Maybe?
But to that point, if you have four bays that are available and 13 parking spaces, theoretically, could it be stored inside the bay overnight?
Yeah, I mean, that's the intention. Those 13 spaces are where the activity should be occurring.
So where this comes into the question is, I think, on the codes operations, C policies and pursuit of vehicle maintenance and storage parts, those consistent with criminal regulations. Obviously, if there's a potential, you know, fluid leak, that would have to be inside the building, from my understanding, obviously.
Yes, all repair happens inside the building.
No, not even that, but if you have a vehicle coming in leaking fluid, if it's overnight, would there be accessibility to get inside the bays for the collection system that would be in there?
You're asking me to...
I know it's a loaded question, and you're not the one to answer it, but...
The answer is yes, in the facilities that I know about. You're asking me to speak on behalf of an owner who doesn't have a tenant. Where I've had specific tenants, that the answer I would easily say to you is yes, because if they're getting through the front gate, they can just as easily get through the opener for the repair facility. So logically, the answer is yes.
What if the repair facility already has trucks/trailers in existence in those bays? What do you do with that truck?
Which is why I was trying not to get myself painted into a quarter-by-job. Weird things can happen. It's not the intent, it's not designed for that. Could we imagine a scenario in which six trucks broke down, and this is the only facility that can take them? Maybe, but it's not likely, and it's not what we're designing for.
Based on your national statistics of how much trucking has increased?
Sure.
So now we may have a situation where trucks are leaking, and now they're just leaking out on the ground, and they're not in a collection facility, in the repair facility with a collection device. So what do we do then?
At the moment, they're leaking on the street. So this is a better, it's better to get them here than leaking out on public streets with no protection.
Well, this is, this paint they're starting.
It's going to be paved.
It's going to be paved.
I'm sorry? It's paved with grease traps and all kinds of things.
Yes, internal will have grease traps. Will the external have grease traps?
External?
The external parking lots?
I don't think so, but we'll have to ask the civil that.
So if they're storing on-site, and they're leaking, they're leaking on-site, it's penetrating through potentially into the groundwork.
How else does the civil engineer deal with the store one?
But I think...
He's taking me beyond my skills.
There's also listed in the statement of operation, I've been trying to find it within here, but I think it said that if vehicles need to be towed from the site, it would be towed from the site. That's, I think, kind of what we're trying to get another...
That's right, you hear what you were saying, you were very quiet.
F, yeah. The towing of vehicles from the site may happen on a rare occasion when it's discovered the repair is beyond the ability of the facility.
Yes.
So I guess the ultimate question is, if there's an inability for the facility to store the vehicle overnight, would it be detoured to another facility? So the rare instances that you're referring to, based off of this, it sounds like that no, it wouldn't be.
The logical answer is yes. The experts would get a phone call saying, can you receive a truck? And if they can't, they'd say no.
So when a truck's coming in here, there's going to be a call?
So I, Canley, I think this is outside of the scope, and I think it's putting him in a, Mr. Rankappa, in a position. I do think there are some follow-up questions that could be asked of Mr. Shields, put him on the hot seat. Because, and I'm thinking of one instead, because I have another client that has an access issue, and access control is important.
Then in regard to the use itself?
Yes.
Not to interrupt your questions that are recently planned.
The chairman outranks me any day.
So, yeah, so on this issue, let's see if we can just wrap up these questions. We can obviously have time for more, but we want to try and manage the larger scope of this hearing. So with what Ms. Carty just said, you want to defer that question to the owner?
I would say ultimately, that's why I asked the question before, why I was a little perplexed why.
Before, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have some questions relative to the use variance testimony.
Agreed, right, I knew you would. Okay. Yeah, why don't you finish that, Jay, and then we'll go from there.
Just going through the testimony then. Frankly, I think everybody's aware, you know, we're having a lot of issues with warehouses. Warehouses are definitely coming much more. I know I probably get a package or four or five a day at my house. These are not uncommon, but in the same instance, it doesn't necessarily mean an agricultural zone, or an A1 zone, which is also a residential zone, would necessarily be appropriate to satisfy that. Our master plan reexam from, I'm going to lean on this one, 11/2020, you know, refers to that there should be ordinance revisions, and to address the intent and purpose and the need for the fact of tractor-trailers, storage facilities, warehousing, et cetera. We have three zones that probably could, these uses would be permitted, M1, M2, and M3, where they would be, you know, most likely considered a permitted use. Here, we have a use in, you know, an agricultural zone and an NC zone with significant residential adjacent around it. The master plan recognizes the need to look into it, but the master plan also recommended various... various rezoning of properties, and this property was not one of them. How do you rectify with, you know, obviously the intent, and if our master plan does not have this property be utilized as a warehouse, whereas, you know, that's a ware storage facility, trucking facility, and your desire to do that, this to me frankly seems somewhat contradictory to the intent and purpose of our master plan, and may have a negative impact on our master plan.
My turn?
Your turn.
Okay, long question.
Yeah, sorry.
If we were starting from scratch, and we actually have a farm sitting here, and we were trying to figure out if this is the right place in your community for this use, it probably isn't. And I don't disagree with that, but, but the issue is you already have a non-conforming use that isn't going away voluntarily, and the question is, can we make it better? The whole point of this exercise, this application before you, is taking the non-conforming use that exists, the thing, something like what was in the 2002 area, maybe a little smaller than that, but something like that, and turn it into this. It's a little bit bigger by adding the two pieces that were improperly encroached on, but it adds the basins, the setbacks, the landscaping, the burning, the whole, the, the front being significantly better, getting rid of four curb cuts. So this is not a question of, should we convert a farm into this use? This is a question of, we've got a non-conforming use, is there a way to get something better out of that than simply letting that non-conforming use go forward historically the way it was?
Well, no, we have a, we have an approved use from 1986.
Yep.
Which frankly is significantly smaller than this 2002 area.
I understand, that's your view.
No, I'm, I'm looking at the, what we believe is the prior plans, which is only the one lot. So I'm, you know.
I'm not sure that site plan is a condition of that approval, but these are, these are arguments I'm trying not to have.
Okay, well, I can only go by what I have as an approved, as the plan that was submitted with that approval, and it's only, again, the one lot, looks concentrated towards Bridgeborough Road, there's not as much in the back. And this 2002 drawing shows other lots expanded that are beyond what this prior approval is, and I don't believe are referenced in the resolutions for the prior approval. So that was one aspect. The other aspect is this expanded over time without approvals.
It did.
And.
As we've acknowledged.
I, I understand you've acknowledged that, but it's expanded, and then, you know, we're trying to say, I want to know what was there before. To me, that's the original, not what it's, not what it's expanded to. No, 2002 is much bigger than what the spot was.
Compare 2002 to 2020, and the additional stuff that happened between those two days, the area that was impacted was what it is.
So.
But Ty doesn't go to the runner, Ty doesn't go to the runner. If 2002, this, this document here of 2002 is beyond, is what Mr., what our, what our planner is saying, if it's going beyond what was already approved, we don't just say, oh, well, you went beyond what we approved, and I guess we have to accept that?
No, I, I've acknowledged that that drawing is probably more than what, what was the core use. How much more is it, is, I, I got chastised for saying in dispute, that there's a disagreement between the parties as to what that core approval approved. It's, it's something less than the 2002 aerial. I agree.
But again, that original approval was from 89. The master plan reexam, 2020.
Yeah.
And they still, knowing that pre-existing was there, didn't recommend that this site be rezoned.
I don't want to get into an argument with you about how insane agricultural zoning was in this corner.
That's your opinion, and that's fine, I can respect that, we can disagree.
Right.
I didn't rezone it.
I know.
That's not, that's not, you know, our job as a zoning board, but we need to go by what's in our master plan and what's in our zone plan.
Yes.
And they did not recommend.
If we're starting with vacant land, everything you say makes sense to me. But if we're starting with a core use, and the question is, can we do something better, then whatever, whatever it is you believe was approved by that non-conforming approval, I, and I don't know what that picture is, so assuming, assume that picture in your mind, is what we're doing here better or worse than going back to that? I think this is better, if you disagree, then.
But that's a matter of opinion, because I'm going to have to look at what was previously approved, and you can always make what's there better, no question.
Well, that's, that's the verb of remind-hill standard.
The question is, is that raised to the standard of what would be appropriate for a use variance, and to expand that use variance onto additional properties and the potential impacts on the surrounding properties?
That's the verb of remind-hill issue, and you either agree this is better than going back to the non-conforming, or not.
I don't think that's a black and white answer. I think there's a simple answer of, you could take what's non-conforming, improve what's non-conforming, and not expand it. You can take the.
But there's no legal responsibility for the applicant to approve it, it would simply be going back to whatever it was.
Oh, there is, because they've expanded without approvals, so they're in violation of their own.
The extensions would have to be removed.
Right.
But ultimately, we'd get back to that core use, which we think is more, you think is less, but whatever that is, that core use would be allowed.
Exists that the prior approved use is allowed.
Right.
No question about it.
Right, and I think this is better than that. Or better than us fighting about it and then getting to wherever that is.
Oh, and we're going to have to disagree on that, because this is significantly larger than what was originally approved. And again, you're coming in for the use variance, so you're asking for that expansion, and I understand you're, you're saying that, you know, yes, we're going to expand, but we're going to try to offset that impact by X, Y, Z.
Right.
And the question becomes, you know, again, does this, significantly larger, I, I don't mean to say, sound so harsh like that, but this is significantly larger than what was originally approved.
It has more land area, I don't know that it has more parking spaces.
It's got a lot more than what I see on the prior plan.
I, I know, and that, that's an area of, that word I'm not supposed to say, dispute between us.
Well, I think just to put it, to make the record clear, counsel was speaking about dispute in a legal context, and the construct of your comment, that we hope it doesn't go into litigation or something along those lines, was intimated, which again, this board cannot be influenced by in any way, shape, or form, we have to use the positive and criteria, positive and negative criteria to analyze whether or not your application should be approved in this particular zone.
I'll leave to the lawyers arguing that issue.
I have my questions as to whether or not this is a benefit to the surrounding area, I think there's definitely negative impacts on the surrounding properties. Again, I cannot look at the violations and incorporate, and, and just go from there. I have to look at what was originally approved. I think there'd be definitely improvements that could be made to the prior approved site that could offset some impacts, but once you go into expanding to further properties, you know, I think there's negative impacts to surrounding areas. I think each of the purposes you represented can be provided by addressing the site, the approved site itself as opposed to the overall area, you know, so I have significant concerns with this, to be honest with you. Chairman, members of the board, I'll be happy to answer any further questions you have, and obviously, I'm still here.
I do have a few questions.
Sure.
The current approval, which is documented on record in the township, is 90 parking spots on one specific lot, correct?
Correct, not sure the spaces, but one specific lot, yes.
One specific lot, but there was an amount, because there was a written amount on a document somewhere that we had read in this, of, one of the four times I read it, with a drawing and a circle that was stamped from the township.
Yes.
So we were going to go from 90 parking spots on one lot to 300 over three.
Correct.
That is correct.
So that is substantially increasing it. And just because, I, I'm, maybe I'm wrong for stating this appropriately, that the due diligence that the property was bought, that maybe they were misinformed of what they could do for it, is not the responsibility of the board to say, okay, this is our, we have to deal with this now, because that is the due diligence of an owner to purchase something, know exactly what it is before they buy. We all have that same responsibility. I think, I feel that, I have a true feeling that you were misrepresented, whoever the owner was, when they bought this, and that's not, nothing we can change.
And I, I don't see, and I apologize, I don't see the, the count of spaces, so.
There was, there was, it's in this document, it might have been in the last one or the time before, and it was a count of 90, whatever that date was, in 86, because it said it.
Counsel, I know that as this colloquy has been going back and forth, I don't know if your planner was done testifying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not for closing questions, I just, I just wanted to know.
No, by all means.
More direct testimony, okay. All right, so, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to close a loop earlier that Ed and Jay had with the 120 days. It's not because trucks are coming in to repair, go back to the cyclical cycle of the truck usage, just to close that loop.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
And you may not really answer this question, is there a specific location on the site that will be a longer-term storage versus a section that's ready for repair, or they're just going to kind of go anywhere that they fit?
Yes, because, because it's going to happen dynamically over time, and, and there'll be multiple companies owning trucks, even though there's one operator for the site, the trucks may be owned by multiple companies, they're asking for spaces. So one company may say, I need all my trucks, and the other company says, I'm still storing mine, so it's, it's, think of it more of a, of a train yard, the cars are moving.
I just look for, from it, from a, I'm trying to look through a different lens here, if they're there for a longer period of time, in my mind, they need more repair.
No, they're just not needed on the road.
And when they're stacked back to back in a longer term, the safety of the site is a concern to me. The ability to get, if, you know, a truck in the very back corner catches on fire, how many are going to go before we can, the fire department can gain access from a safety stand, standpoint? That's when they're stacked like that, and again, they were stacked like that in 2002, I, I understand that.
It's very common in the storage of trailers, they're not, they don't typically spontaneously combust, but I understand things can happen. Okay, I can't, I can't see if you're. You guys have follow-up? Mayor? You guys have follow-up? Yeah, go ahead.
There's a question, maybe, if they've expanded the property past of what they were approved, can we have a say on what happens to the parcels that got ill-encroached on?
No, this is not an enforcement board. Our, our decision, your decision tonight is based on what's in front of you now. So if they, yeah, that's, that's an enforcement issue that, the applicant is hoping that this will be a successful application, so it'll obviate that, but that's not something that this board deals with.
Okay. All right, where Counsel to go? Deciding if he needs to ring back the operator. Counsel, I, I had a question for, you know, you can maybe direct if this is the right witness, but the, the fire department issued some questions concerning the container truck lot in this application. Fire marshal reviewed the site plan submitted, and indicated that he had some questions. Number one, how long will the trailers remain on location? Will they be loaded or unloaded? Will there be a truck with them or just a trailer storage? And I think my understanding is, and this planner, you can, trailers will remain on location, that's accurate, obviously, right?
Trailers were a maximum 120 days, and they're empty.
All right, and so they won't be loaded, that, that answers the next question. Will there be a truck? We had discussions about that, there could be in your testimony, but we don't know.
It's not intended, it would be a rare occurrence, the trucks are intended to be at the front of the site where those 13 spaces are, rather than distributed through the balance of the, of the site.
The other question was, will, will the existing building be used? And you testified that it will be for repair, correct? All right, what is the use of that building? What is the use of that building?
As I said, the improvements to that building would go through your normal building department review, and have all the fire suppression, and whatever is necessary as part of that.
And the use of the building is for repair predominantly, or is it something else?
Repair, and most logistics companies have a small office space, so it'd be office and repair.
Okay. The next question was, the two closest hydrants on Bridgeborough Street would require some sort of shutdown in the event of a fire. We are requesting a hydrant be installed inside the property, so if this was approved, would there, I mean, you agreed to do that pursuant to the fire marshal's suggestion or instruction?
Yes.
I imagine it would be. Okay, the next question was, will you have gates locked?
Yes.
So there will be gates at the, at the entrance to the property?
Yes.
And they will be locked for off-hours? Yes.
Yeah, that's something that I want to address with the operations.
Okay, right.
Because that's, I don't think planning.
Okay, all right. The, the fire marshal also indicated if so, these gates would require you to have a Knox pad lock.
Yes.
Okay.
And there'll be camera security as well, I mean, there are a bunch of, there are lots of things that go into securing the site appropriately.
Okay, so those were the questions that were, were posed, and we may also have those for, you know, the manager for criteria that testified as well, but thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so Ed, Jay, you guys have follow-up?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I missed anybody on the board, everybody?
We're good.
Okay, all right, Counsel?
Can we take a five-minute break?
Sure. They said we're going to take a five-minute break, we'll be right back. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's get moving.
Are we back on the record? Are we back after record?
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, counsel for the applicant has indicated they'd like to, to carry the application. But so, what I'm going to do now, I think you probably know, is I'd like to hear from the public. We're going to open it up to public because you've been waiting patiently this, I'm sorry.
Can we just first, is that correct, Mr. McGowan?
Yeah, we would like to carry, yeah.
Okay. So, for anybody who's interested in this application, it's going to be continued to the August 21 meeting without further notice or publication. So, you won't get further notice, but we are now going to hear public comment on the application. And again, there'll be an opportunity at the next meeting.
Right. Right. So, we're going to start going through, asking for more public comment. I know we did some last time. And then, the continuation of the hearing will be, what was the date again?
August 21.
August 21. Okay. So, I'm going to open it to public. Ladies and gentlemen, we have, I think there's a sign in sheet there. If you want to come up, put your name down, come up, address the board if you wish. You don't have to. Anybody want to come up? Yep, I see your hand first, sir. Come on up.
So, we'll ask you to sign in so we get the spelling of your name and your address. We'll state your name and address for the record, and then I'll swear you in.
All right. And I'm hearing a lot of chatter, so let's, you know, get back to, you know, everybody, we want to be able to hear what the testimony is, okay?
Audience was very good throughout the first three hours, I have to say.
Yeah.
Okay, would you kindly state your name and address?
My name is James Rushmore. I live at 17 Roseland Drive in Del Ran.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this word?
I do. Okay. So, I've listened to the expert testimony for several meetings now, and the contradictions are rather stark. And I'm going, I don't mean to suck the mic, but I have a few things I'd like to cover. One is sound, and I know their sound expert is not here tonight. But in the fancy colored map that he presented to us, they were generating sound in the center of their property, not on the outsides. And my back fence is right adjacent to their property. The topography of, of my lot and the lots of my immediate neighbors runs down so that our fence is way lower than our homes because they sit up high. So, if I sit on my deck, or if I sit in my bedroom with my window open, I am well above their proposed berm for sound barrier. And the sixer, six foot trees that they're going to put on top of that berm are not going to block the sound for a long, long time. The truck turnaround, where they're doing their K turns, is in the back of the property, adjacent to my house. And even though it's 100, 150 feet away from my fence, that sound travels. And those are not quiet vehicles. The other thing is, this applicant has not been supposedly, been supposed to do a lot of activity. And when they were doing activity prior to getting shut down, there were tractors and trailers stored on this facility for an extended period of time. And there, and most of the moving of these vehicles occurred after dark. This traffic study that was presented tonight is starkly different than what was presented previously. And what was presented tonight in terms of the impact on the, on the, the lighted intersections at Hartford Creek and, I'm sorry, Bridgeborough Creek and Hartford and Bridgeborough, the ratings on those don't seem the same as what we were given at the last meeting when the other gentleman was here. We have a dangerous intersection, and we have several schools that these kids walk to and from, immediately adjacent to where this traffic is going to occur. We've had near accidents and accidents because of lots of vehicles, including trucks. A truck trying to make a right-hand turn from Bridgeborough Road onto Hartford cannot make that turn, even using the corner there to try and wiggle around, because the cars cheat up too close to the light to be able to give that truck ample space to turn in front, in front of 7-Eleven. I live near that intersection. I worked on Bridgeborough Road for over 30 years as a tenant in Dr. Polino's building. So, I've driven that road on a daily basis for a long time. The amount of development that's occurred has totally changed this end of Del Ran, and it, it really is overwhelmed by what's currently existing. I'm very upset when people do things that aren't permitted, and then they think that they have the right to continue to do what's not permitted, or do more than that, or ask for forgiveness as they try and do more. There's something really, really wrong with that. And I, I know that your solicitor said that you guys are not here to be enforcers, and I get that. But you also shouldn't be here to rubber stamp what's not right and allowed to get, to make it bigger. This is a real challenge for the immediate neighbors, not just in Ashley Crossing, but in all of the neighbors and all the people that drive through our community on a daily basis. We should have a safe area, a clean area, to be able to do, live our lives on a daily basis. And I think that there's nothing positive that's going to come from expanding this facility and allowing it to do what they're proposing to do. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry, ma'am. I thought you were coming, coming up. Go ahead.
Ken Paris, 31 T-Berry Lane, Del Ran.
And when you're done, just sign in, please.
Sure. A couple of things I wanted to bring up. One is, first of all, Creek Road is also, they are not permitted to drive on that. I confirm that. It's 12 ton, and I believe the trucks are about 40 ton. The other thing is, there's a fire department that is also down Bridgeborough Road that will also be impacted. If there's emergency, if there's trucks in the way, it could be another issue that should be thought about. Also, I got to ask a question. I know the other property, there is, is there a possibility of environmental issues with the other property? I'm aware that, that trucks have been worked on in the fields there, and there, the actual trucks itself are opened up, and I believe there's possible contamination. Has anybody looked into that? And will that happen here as well? And, and it also was mentioned about the accidents, you know, that these trucks are going to be worked on because they, they, they may be in bad shape, or they could cause an accident. They may cause an accident in our roads. And what are they going to do with the bad tires? Are they going to storm there? That's another environmental issue. So, I think these things need to be looked at. Also, I do say, say the same thing. We have three schools. We have children walking all the streets. It's a dangerous situation. I definitely would be against it. I think it's a bad idea, and our town really doesn't need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, next up, anybody else want to speak? Oh, sir, I see your hand back there.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Victor Giuliano. I live in actually, Mount Laurel, Tensaw Mill, but I own quite.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
And you live in Mount Laurel?
Yes. But I own, I own quite a few properties in town.
Do you, you own property in Del Ran next to this one, or are you?
Oh, yeah. Yes, I do. Numerous properties.
Okay. I just caution the board because if you're not on the 200-foot list, you really don't have an interest in that.
Got you, but I am.
Okay, you're on the 200-foot list?
Yes. So, you know, I'll just.
Well, I'm sorry. What, what property address is within that?
I believe it is 3103 Bridgeborough Road.
Thank you.
That's one of them. So, my question, one of my questions is, if there are stormwater systems that they would possibly be putting in there, would they be underground or above ground? And if they are underground, you know, the filtration systems that they'd have to use just because of the oil or the potential for the oil and the runoff for the vehicles and trucks to, you know, actually take care of it, or if it's just the basins and then the oils or whatever would just end up in the basins? The other issues that I've had on my properties is there's been bamboo, which has, you know, been brought to their attention over the years. They have cut it down recently, but bamboo is extremely invasive, and it is, I notified them prior to it being on my property. It's now well-established onto my properties, and now it's a bigger issue, and it's probably going to be for the foreseeable future. Aside from that, you know, the environmental issues, you know, I don't know if they've ever done phase ones or phase twos on any of these properties. You know, there are, I, I've seen people dump motor oil and stuff on the truck properties that they also own. So, I would hope that if they were aware of any issues or environmental issues, that they would take care of those problems and, you know, hopefully do the same for this other property as well. So, those are my biggest issues and concerns that I have, and do with it what you will.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else like to address the board?
Cindy, C-I-N-D-Y, Sparlin. I live at 31 Marcia Drive.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this?
I do. I have a couple of things that really bother me about this. The traffic guys have always said, "It doesn't make any difference." Always going to make nine seconds difference. There is no way. I have been behind these trucks, making a left turn off of Hartford onto Bridgeborough Road. One truck goes through the left-hand turn, not nine seconds. That's one truck that you're stuck behind. To go straight ahead, about a truck and a half goes through that light. So, we're going to sit there for hours trying to get out of our neighborhood. And their estimation of rush hour from four to five, let school get out. We don't leave our subdivision between two and three because you can't. Teenage drivers go bumper to bumper coming out, just like a school bus. You don't have any choice. You sit there. And when you have to wait two or three minutes to get out of your subdivision, that's crazy. What's an 18-wheeler going to do? It's going to be even worse. The kids dart in and out of traffic. Teenagers are brain dead. We all know that. We were all there. And kids are going to get hurt. They're going to run in front of a truck because they can do it. And it, this is just a really dangerous proposition. They're going to have 291 spaces, but yet we're only going to have 26 outbound trucks a day. That doesn't add up. They're not here to lose money. They're here to make money. And 26 trucks isn't going to do it. There, any truck that comes out of that facility, whether it's turning right or left, is going to take up two lanes of traffic. We see it on the one on Hartford Road. They take a right turn, they have to go into the oncoming lane to turn right. They take a left turn, they have to cross both lanes of traffic to make a left turn. Traffic comes to a dead stop. You can, our, our school crossing guards have come close to getting hit several times. This, this is dangerous, and they're trying to make it look like it's, oh, this is, we're going to improve things. That's not an improvement in my book. All it's going to do is hurt the neighborhood, hurt the area, destroy our homes. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, I should clarify. So, the agreement to toll, to continue the application to the August 21 hearing, you told the time for the board to act, correct?
Yes.
Is there agreement by the board, motion to grant the approval or grant the request to adjourn under the condition that no further notice, no further publication? They agreed to toll the time for the.
Motion up for.
Motion.
One second.
Who motion?
Dave.
Jack second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Okay.
Oh, we're still going to be here? I thought you said.
No, no, that, it was just.
Okay.
procedural stuff, placing the record for that.
Steve Farrar, 11 Tara Lane in Ashley Crossing.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. To go after what's, I mean, to, to add on to what Cindy said, I'm under oath. I'm a resident. I'm standing in front of 7-Eleven, watching a tractor trailer who has, who wants to turn onto Hartford from Bridgeborough, who has to swing out to the left turn lane and then arc into the left turn lane coming down Hartford to get around that corner. Okay? He does that once for cycle of the light, so that's one truck that gets through. The crossing guards that are there now have put in cones. And I'm talking the corner of 7-Eleven. Okay? A cone right in the, by the curb in the street, and one on the sidewalk. Because the really good drivers were cutting it real close, and when they did, the truck body would be over the sidewalk. Sidewalk comes out in a right angle, they're over the sidewalk, so they have cones now so the kids can stand behind them when the trucks go around the corner. It's, that's what's really happening there. Regardless of the study, we've got to be careful and protect our kids. I also want to add on to what Jim said. Jim, Jim Rushmore. This property is about 100. This property is about 100, about 19 acres now, and that 19 acres has a perimeter of about 4,200 feet. The 300 feet behind the residential houses, that's five houses in Ashley Crossing, it's 300 feet, out of a total of 4,200 feet in perimeters. They picked the 300 feet where people live to run their trucks up there and have a truck turn around right at the fence. Okay? Because that was to their benefit. Although the zoning says it should be to the benefit of the residents if we're making changes. This certainly wasn't to the benefit of the residents, because of both sound and light. Now, I know they're moving it back, but just think about this. Jim told you, every one of those houses is on a slope. It slopes down to the storm sewer by the fence. So five houses are all walkout basements, which means their living space is 11 or 12 feet above the ground level. And they can stand on their back porch and look over the fence and look all the way down to Bridgeboro Road. So, that's, that means they're about 15 feet above, 15 feet above ground level. They're proposing a berm of six to eight feet, and on the other side, there's trucks coming up, and a trailer, and figure his lights are about four feet off the ground, and the sound from his engine is about four feet off the ground. So you've got a truck that's four feet, you've got a berm that's six to eight feet, and then you've got a house that's 14 feet, and the sound goes right over the berm to the Berm doesn't work. Doesn't, and certainly, the lights that are coming from the trucks as they come up to the truck turnaround are shining right into the bedrooms of the people by the edge of the development there. So, it's not right from a, from a sound perspective, it's not working from a light perspective, at least half the year, when the trees have no leaves, and potentially the whole year, depending on how loud the noise is. So I'd like to suggest that we ask for a noise study, not in the middle of the facility, but up where the people live, and see what the sound is there, because I think we need to propose, they put up a barrier, kind of like what Amazon did down on Del Ran Parkway. They have a big barrier, because they had the 24-hour operation, and they wanted to knock down the sound and the noise, and the light. I think it doesn't have to be obviously that big, but something more substantial than some trees and bushes. Trees that are going to take 10 years to grow. That would certainly help the residents along there, because those residents are the ones that are getting most impaired by this improvement in what's going over there. And I, you know, I don't want to say you shouldn't do it, I'm saying, take care of the people that are most affected by it, and take care of them properly. The last thing that I have a concern about is, I've been through, been through a lot of information, and I'm concerned about water quality long-term. We have water on the south, or wetlands on the south side of this facility. We have wetlands on the north side of this facility. And I say "we" because it is ours, it is township property, the wetland on the north side of this facility. And then we also have the storm sewer that runs along the property edge of Ashley Crossing. It goes out to the washed, whatever they call those, big troughs with big stones in it, and it mixes with lows coming down, and it all goes down into Rancocas Creek, which is where all this groundwater goes eventually. And my concern is, what if we have an accident? That's all. I know this board can't involve with what-ifs, but what if we have a terrible accident? Something leaks accidentally, not purposefully, so it could be a real mess, and it could be a real liability. And it could be really a liability, because that wet, the wetlands there is owned by the township. So, thank you very much for your ear.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Liz Caputa. I live at 33 Marcia Drive. I'm new to this, I just moved in on July 2nd.
33?
33 Marcia Drive.
And you'll swear, and you'll sign in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth before this?
I do, I do. I'm new to this. As I said, I just moved into this home on July 2nd. One of the reasons I bought it was because of the location and what was behind me. And now I find, I'm sorry, I'm, now I see that I have to worry about environmental issues, sound issues, light pollution, traffic, more traffic. I knew when I moved up here that Hartford Road was going to be tough, I knew Del Ran High School was right there, and I knew I was going to have to adjust my schedules on a lot of things. But when I heard this, and this is the first time I'm hearing it, this is the first meeting I've attended, and the concerns that everybody, one of my neighbors have, it's scary. It's scary. And if I would have known what was going on, I would have thought twice before I really, before I made an offer on this house. And I really, and that's really all I need to say, I want to say. I just, I think it's sad that we have to go through this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sal Meliziano. I live at 15 Roslyn Drive, here in Del Ran.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth before this board?
I do. Well, ladies and gentlemen, this is my first time addressing you the zoning board. My wife Carol and I have been residents here in Del, in Ashley Crossing for 25 years, and we've attended most of the meetings that you've had regarding this issue. We just want each and every one of you to know that we respect and appreciate you for helping prevent that sports stadium from being built right over the fence from where we live. By the way, I'm neighbors with Jim Rushmore. We live next door to him. Whatever he said is what we see. We're only 30 feet from the fence. But we're very confident that you'll make the right decision regarding the 18-wheeler trucks that will destroy the peace and quiet that we currently have. I just wanted to bring to your attention something that I think is important. Around 1790, a famous British statesman named Edmund Burke made two very important statements that I believe relate to our situation. One of his statements said, "Bad laws are the worst sort of tyranny." He also said something that I think some of us have heard before. "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." Now friends, I can't think of anything more evil than a law that may soon be passed, allowing several 18-wheeler trucks, several 18-wheeler trucks, to invade our peaceful and quiet retirement village of Ashley Crossing. When these trucks pull into their respective parking spaces, they will be emitting a beep, 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 beep sound that will annoy and awaken everybody within a half a mile. Believe me. My wife has very delicate ears. She can hear when the toilet bowl's running. Now, I know for a fact that when we were woken many, many times by this beep, 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 beep. So what I'm saying is, please, dear members of the zoning board, you're all going to retire pretty soon. You're going to all be looking for us a really good place to live for the rest of your lives. All we ask, all we ask is that you please put yourselves in our shoes. That's all I have to say.
I live at 22 Ashley Drive.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And then just sign in when you finish your testimony.
Now, I've lived in different places in New Jersey, and I'm not originally from Del Ran, I'm a Mount Holly boy. But Hartford Road connects 130 with Medford, and Bridgeboro connects Riverside with Moorestown. They were originally country roads. They went through a farming area. The trucks they, that traveled along these roads were carrying fruit and vegetables, and a few families. Del Ran has seen fit to make Hartford and Bridgeboro, you might say, the center of a new residential area. There's Ashley Crossing, Fox Trail, Tail, Summer Hill, The Grand, and another community just down Bridgeboro. There are two shopping centers, and there's a high school and an elementary school. These are stressed roads, because they're still no bigger than the country roads they originally were laid out, connecting areas for commerce through a rural area. As you've heard, we've heard all night long about traffic, trucks, the noise, the congestion, the danger with children walking to and from school. Please consider how stressed these roads are already when you vote one way or another on this issue. Thank you.
All right, I don't see any further hands. Anybody else? Okay, I, okay, I don't see any more hands, so at this point, I'm going to close to the public. Again, we have another date, as we've discussed, I'll open it to the public, as we do at every meeting, on that occasion as well. So, counsel, at this point, you're complete for the evening with what Ms. Cardy had put on the record, is that right? Thank you. All right, so, before we just break and go into complete anarchy, as happens before it relieves, if you could just allow us, the next thing on our agenda is to open and close it to the public in something else not concerning this application. I'm assuming there aren't any. I'm going to open it to the public for that purpose. Do I see any hands for any other issues? I see none, I'm going to close to the public for that reason. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a good night.